Good evening, everyone. We would like to call our October 25th Fayetteville City Council meeting in order. Thank you for joining us. Those of you joining us remotely, again, the city council is currently using a temporary location located at our FAST Center. Hopefully, we will be back in council chambers soon. Thank you for joining us. At this time, we'll go to item 2.0 is the invocation. Councilmember Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City of Fayetteville, for allowing me to serve. Let's pray, please. Gracious Father, it is in the name of Jesus Christ that we come before you tonight before this beautiful city. We thank you for giving us this city. We thank you for the community that we're growing into. God continue to give us wisdom, knowledge, and with that understanding, bless those who you have appointed and you have assisted in our appointment to do the job that we were elected to do. Give us a spirit of unity and wisdom. God continue to guide us and keep this nation as we strive to be the light, the salt, and the city on the hill. And we ask these things in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Man. At this time, council will go to the Pledge of Allegiance if we could all rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Council, item 4.0. I think we've been joined remotely by councilmembers Waddell and Ingram. Council, are you there? Councilmembers Ingram and Waddell, you there?
I'm here. This is Councilmember Waddell.
Councilmember Ingram, you there? All right. I see the audio folks are saying, yes. Okay, all right. Item 4.0 is the announcements. It's time we will have a COVID update by Mr. Scott Bullock. Mr. Bullock, how are you, sir?
I am very well, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Hope everyone is enjoying this wonderful Indian summer weather that's prolonged us here and made us so good. Numbers for the day. We're at day 589 for our state of emergency. I think something worth noting to point out is today's the 314th day of the actual presence of the vaccine that was available here in Cumberland County. And the point I want to make is if we look back from this date a year ago, so our new cases today were reported at 1,183 new cases. If we go back to this time last year, it was 1,807, and we were at 7% positive in new cases versus 5.8. So, we're in a better place than where we were. And I think the exciting news is we've got tools to combat this thing that we didn't have last year. And with that being said, I think everyone is hopeful that we won't see a midwinter peak as we had last year, which was so tough on us. So, we keep grinding out the message about vaccinations to anyone that will listen. I know there's confusion in the street, and I've heard it myself personally. And I don't know what the best means to clear it up other than to keep repeating our message, which is if you're over 65, yes, you can have a booster, no strings attached. You just show up. And there are clinics being run continuously. I know Cape Fear Valley's and the Health Department's probably gets the most press, but your private providers can do it and so forth. And then if you fall in those other subgroups, such as people in long-term care, people that are adults with some sort of coexisting condition, you certainly should consider it in concert with your doctor. We're working hard right now to kind of set the stage. In about another week or so, the meeting will occur between CDC and the FDA and the other stakeholders that control it all. And we're going to be looking at children 5 to 11, so stay tuned. That's going to be kind of the next great leap that we're going to take. And as soon as that information is on the street, we'll get it spread. And with your help as well, we want to put that out to the masses so that we can work on another group. Because before I came over here tonight, the county has 65% of its population total with one shot and 57% with a complete two-shot series or the one-shot J&amp;J. There's also a little bit of chatter about mixing these different brands. We've been told that it's okay. I think what's going to happen right now due to availability and due to the logistic supply chain in the greater scheme of things, wherever it is you show up to get the shot, you're going to just have what's available. If you need something specific or you're interested in something specific, you probably will need to talk to your private provider, or at least call some of these clinics that you're interested in going to or considering. With that, I'll be subjecting any questions, anyone has, comments?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Any questions for Mr. Bullock? All right, Mr. Bullock, look for more good news. Next update.
I hope we might be able to dispense with our masks before long.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Council will move to...
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to recognize NC DOT. They were able to come out and install several reflectors off Hoaklute Road. Off Hoaklute Road, there have been several accidents. So, I just wanted to just take this time and just thank them for hearing the concerns of the citizens and my requests and making sure that they were able to help in that area. So, that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right. Council, item 5.0 is the manager's report. Mr. Hewitt.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As we had mentioned to you some 30 days ago, we would come back at this meeting and give you an update on the efforts to disperse the money for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program or ERAP.
Go on.
ERAP program. And if you would like, Mr. I can't remember Earl's last name. Earl Randall is on the call and is on the phone and is able to answer questions. But I think he also has a small presentation he'd like to give, introduction at the beginning.
Good evening, Mr. Randall. Can you hear us? Mr. Randall, can you hear us? Mr. Randall, can you hear us?
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir. We can hear you now.
Yes, it just sent me the link to join as a panelist. Sorry about that. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this opportunity to come back, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to come back to provide a 30-day update. Within the last 30 days, we have hit significant program milestones. On October 7th, we fully obligated the City of Fayetteville's ERAP 1 funds. And 13 days later, on October 20th, we fully dispersed the city's ERAP 1 funding. 30 days ago, we heard the councils call for action, and as a team, we delivered. As I previously mentioned, we have completely dispersed the $5.1 million available for services. And in the last 30 days, we were able to disperse $4 million of that total, over $4 million of that total. The city's ERAP 1 funding has been completed, completely dispersed two months ahead of the December 30th deadline. So, we did heed the charge. We did hear you guys 30 days ago, and we performed as a team. So, last month at the meeting, we spoke of stabilizing 600 families. And as of today, we have doubled that output and have over 1,200 families safe in our homes today due to the program. This program has made strides in the last 30 days and has seen some success in preventing the mass wave of evictions that many people fear. While these numbers are impressive, we have had and will continue to have some challenges. We have identified and are working to reduce the time from award to payment. Currently, we are averaging about 15 days, and we have committed to working to reduce that to below two weeks or to 10 business days. To that end, we have about 33 full-time personnel and a total of about 60 full and part-time employees assisting on this contract. The most significant factor that contributes to this delay is that eight out of 10 landlords would prefer paper check than to direct deposit. So, nonetheless, nonetheless, there are steps that we can and that we are taking to reduce the amount down to that two-week or 10-business-day goal. We do have some good news that the number of new applications that are coming into the program are trending down. Just to really hit on these highlights and these points, that we are really meeting the needs of people, we are really meeting the needs of the people with this program, and we'll continue to stand in the gap for the landlords and the tenants. This completes just the 30-day update on what we wanted to share with you guys just on hitting those significant milestones of being 100% dispersed of the ERAP 1 funding. So, I think that's a good 30-day update, and I wanted to, just to present that to you guys on this invitation back. Thank you for allowing me this time to give you the update on where we are.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Randall. We do have a couple of questions. That is fantastic news to hear that, just to make sure I heard you correct. You're saying that all monies has been obligated and dispersed from that first round?
Yes, sir. First-round funding, all have been obligated and all dispersed.
All right. That's great news. I know certainly the emails have slowed up that I was forwarding to you all because they were, they were coming pretty rapid. Go to councilmembers DJ Hair, Davis, and Kinston.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Randall, thank you
Yes, sir.
for that report. I was wondering what you were going to present tonight. Was it going to be something that would have my face smiling? So, thank you for such a good report. Though I heard you say it, but just wanted to go back on some of the calls that we had received and...
Thank you.
Some of the calls that we have received and I guess re-forwarded to you since the last meeting, since you say that you all have dispersed 100%, that is to mean to include those folk. Because we had a whole group of people that spoke, I think, at our last meeting. So, I know what 100% means, but that also means to include those citizens.
So, some of the folk, we did take the list of the folk that were at the last meeting that did speak at the last meeting. And so, we have addressed most of their concerns. Some of them were in the payment status, and some of those payments have gone out the door. So, we, in the ones that weren't in payment status that are moving to payment status, that were moving to payments and then dispersment, we are still assisting those individuals as well.
So, since you have dispersed 100% of that funding for the public and a little bit even for me, how does that work now for getting your next portion, your next portion of funding? Has that taken place? Tell us how that works.
So, yeah, that's underway. We are working with the city for that additional $2 million that you guys have appropriated for ERAP 2. So, we are all working to get that underway and going. So, we haven't stopped. So, we haven't stopped working on getting, getting payments dispersed out to folks. So, nothing has stopped and nothing has slowed down. We want to keep this momentum going forward so I can come back in another 30 days and give you another positive report.
Well, that is the charge, sir. So, we hope that you continue to move forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council. Sir, is the check dispersment center local? Meaning...
No, the check is not local.
Okay, so that kind of illuminates why the two weeks is what it is for paper checks, right?
Yeah, we take into account the mailing system.
Got you. Okay. Also, is there any county overlap? Because the county has its own money for ERAP also. Is this money that we're giving, I know it's our city money, but are you also sending out county funds also?
Yes. Yes, we are sending out county funds also.
Okay. So, staff, is there, is there a holdup for, is there another step in the process for sending the other $2 million for ERAP 2? Or is there a schedule for when that's supposed to happen? Or is it...
So, Councilmember, we're continuously moving forward, so there hasn't been a stop at all. The money was appropriated at the October 11th meeting, and we're continuing to process. The county has additional funding. They haven't had the demand that we've had. So, there's been some kind of carryover money from that time period. But we've continued to move forward. Absolutely. So, there hasn't been a lapse in time from the appropriation to now.
So, right now, we're dispersing ERAP 2 money?
Correct. That's what we're moving to, is ERAP 2 money. And that was the first half of ERAP 2 money. We have an additional $3 million. It was $5 million in total. So, once we started to allocate that monies, then it comes down to the $3 million that we can also draw down from the federal government.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Kinston?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, certainly, it is great news to hear the 30-day update. I do have two questions that I just want to get some clarification on. So, you said that we initially started the program in June, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, just for clarification, if someone put in an application in June and their application was approved by, for them individually and the landlord, at this time, they should have their dispersment?
Yes, if it's approved, if their application was approved, their application and the landlord's was approved, yeah, they should have a dispersment.
Okay.
But that's not to say that all June applications are completely finished.
Okay, so, go ahead. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. You know, because we had so many to come in in June, we had close to 2,000 applications come in in June. So, we're still working through some of those June applications to get them fully dispersed.
Okay, so, the months that were being, because June is when you started. So, you're saying that there could be some applications that were still in June that have not been satisfied or have not been dispersed?
Yes, ma'am. There's still some June, there's still some June applications that have not been. Because we started, we started June 1st. We started taking applications. We started processing applications in June. But there were, there were close to almost 1,800, 1,900 applications come in in June. And then we also had our July applications to come in, and then the moratorium was lifted. And so, we had to prioritize, had to prioritize the lowest-income individuals first for 30 days. That's what kept us, that kind of moved us back. We had to prioritize that the lowest, the lowest-income individuals for 30 days first. And also, we went to prioritizing evictions and disconnections, those urgent evictions and disconnections. So, that's what kept us from completely satisfying a first-in, first-out approach. Because we had the escalations also, we worked with the escalations. And that's what was able to keep us from having those mass, mass evictions. Because those individuals that were on imminent threat of eviction or imminent threat of disconnection, we were able to jump in and immediately stop those things from happening. So, those are some of the challenges that we do face with folk having, that has been waiting for a while.
All right. And then my second question, just for policy and procedures, is what happens to the funds if they're in limbo and they're evicted, but they were approved?
So, we, the goal of, the goal of the program is stabilization. So, if an individual has been evicted, we still work with that individual to provide them with down payment assistance as well as two months' rent to stabilize themselves. So, if they have been evicted, we still work with those applicants to get themselves situated and stabilize.
I guess my, what I'm trying to understand is if they've been evicted and the payment has gone through to the landlord, what happens with that payment?
No.
Because that individual is still evicted at that point.
So, no, we wouldn't, we wouldn't pay the landlord if they evicted the person. We wouldn't send it out to the landlord first and then have the person evicted. Now, there are some, some instances where we send out a payment and the landlord accepts three months forward, and then we find out that the landlord evicted the tenant. So, in that situation, the tenant has a credit, and the landlord is supposed to reimburse that tenant to allow the tenant to use the additional funds to find him something else. So, we are seeing some things like that where we're working with tenants and landlords in that regard.
But you're saying, but the landlord already has the funds, but the tenant is already evicted, but they've been paid in advance?
No. No, ma'am. So, in the scenario that you just said, you said that if we send out a payment to the landlord, so if the landlord accepts the payment and then they evict the tenant?
Yes, that's correct.
So, if, if a landlord receives a payment, the landlord received a payment based on, on housing stability for that tenant. So, they're accepting the payment of their arrears, their rental arrears, plus we offer three months forward to ensure stability for that tenant. So, that's the premise that the landlord accepts the funding. So, if the landlord accepts that funding and then puts the tenant out after that, then the tenant is still owed money back from the landlord. It's almost as if you had your security deposit and you just happened to pay your rent forward. You know, the landlord would still owe that tenant that to ensure their stability of moving forward. Did I clarify that for you?
You did clarify, but I was just concerned because then it puts on the landlord that they have the tenant's money. And so, if the tenant is evicted and they're trying to find stabilization, they're waiting on the landlord who now has their advance payment to give them their money back.
Right. But then you're right in that regard. And the landlords, and landlords that accept the advance money, they accept it based on those tenants being paid up for three months. So, there should be no circumstance where they're being evicted for non-payment. Now, there are circumstances where a landlord can go back and evict for something else other than non-payment, a lease violation. So, we didn't, the program didn't put any other stringent requirements on landlords in that regard. So, we left it up to the landlords to either accept the advance payment as, as housing stabilization for those tenants moving forward.
Mr. Jensen, if you are aware of a situation such as that, please let us know because then we can do the investigation.
Yes.
That would be something that is fairly unique that we haven't seen within the program.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. We'll look forward to hearing another positive report in 30 days.
Thank you, sir.
I know council put some, put some pressure on you, but citizens appreciate your effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you all.
All right. All right. Council, item 6.0 is the approval of the agenda. Mayor Pro Tem?
I'm sorry, city manager?
Yes, Mayor and members of council, as you look to approve the agenda, if you could remember, the item 9.0 is the text amendments. If you could schedule, state that that is a public hearing. It was advertised as such, and it is just listed incorrectly on your agenda.
9.02.
So, do you want to make...
So, you'll make a motion to approve with the removal of the item, the, and the 9.02.
And take off the ones that people wanted up-down vote?
I don't know. Yes?
Yes.
So, if I could, what you would need to do is add 9.02 to up under 8.01.
8.01 or create an 8.03 for it?
Yes. Yes, that's, so if we go up under 8.0 and then create another item, 8.03 legislative hearing for item 9.02. Got it?
So, in other words, approve the agenda, adding the public hearing under 8.03.
Approve the agenda with the proposed change.
I got that. But the proposed changes are adding the additional item under the 8-point section where we're doing the other hearings, but also still keeping the 9.02 in place?
No, moving 9.02.
All right.
And creating the new item, 8.03.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda with pulling 7.010 for an up-down vote.
No, we hadn't got the consent yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just, just...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're coming to consent next.
Okay. So, I would like to move 9.02, remove 9.02 and add 8.03 for a public hearing for the seven proposed tax amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, seasonal tax amendments.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would also like to remove 9.03 to take it back to, to bring it back.
So, just remove it?
Just remove it.
From tonight's...
From tonight's agenda.
All right. So, it's a motion by Mayor Pro Tem to approve the agenda with the modifications as listed, adding item 8.03, or relocate 9.02 to, that's seven tax amendments to create item 8.03 and removal of 9.03. Is there a second for that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Davis. Any discussion on the motion? Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Those in favor?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, on the motion.
Okay. All right.
So, you...
Yes, ma'am.
I understood correctly that we're removing the item to appoint a PWC commissioner from the, from this meeting?
Yes.
Okay. We removed it last meeting and pushed it to this meeting. Are we looking at an indefinite pushback? Or what is, what is, what is the timeframe within which we anticipate this will come back?
Councilmember Waddell, we seem to be at a crossroad. The boards and commissions meeting, we are starting a new boards and commission meeting for the new committee that we are appointing. So, I was thinking that maybe we could bring it up then.
So, if I could just ask that we would leave that under, because I think that we've not had, I'll, I'll speak for just me. Nobody's had a conversation with me necessarily to see where I stand on this issue still. And I've not had an opportunity to hear where the rest of my colleagues stand on this issue still. And so, I don't know that there's been any movement or not. And I think that I would like to see us have this discussion today. So, for that reason, I will not be supporting this if it continues to move forward with that removed. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilmember, you had a discussion, question? Okay. All right. It's a motion by Council, Mayor Pro Tem Jensen, seconded by Councilman Davis, as mentioned, for the approval of the agenda. Those voting in favor, show of hands. All right. Those voting in favor, Councilman Davis, Dawkins, Wright, Colvin, Jensen, Hair. Those voting opposed, Councilmember Waddell and Ingram?
Fred.
Okay. Councilmembers Waddell, Ingram, Banks, McGlaughlin, and Kinston. Motion carries. Item 7.0, the consent section. Councilman Wright.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to take 7.07 and pull that for an up-and-down vote.
All right. So, as a, item 7.07, Councilmember Wright. Alright, so as, as a, uh, uh, item seven point zero seven, it's councilmember Wright. Uh, councilmember Waddell, did you have something for under consent?
Yes, I'd like to pull item seven point zero one zero for quick discussion and an up-down vote.
Okay, so, um, so, uh, seeing no other items under consent, it's a motion to approve consent with the exception of seven point oh seven and seven point oh one zero. Uh, is there a motion to approve?
Make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
It's a motion by councilmember Wright, seconded by, uh, councilmember Hare. Any discussion on the motion? Council, I'll look to you for your votes to approve consent with the modification as mentioned. Uh, councilmember Waddell?
Green.
Councilmember, uh, Ingram?
Green.
Alright, Madam Clerk, motion carries unanimous. Item seven point zero seven, councilmember Wright?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, we, uh, discussed this and had a vote on this item. Uh, it passed, but I wanted to bring it for an up-and-down vote. Uh, this is to put another bar, uh, in the downtown area.
So, um, Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, as councilmember Wright stated, you held a public hearing. Uh, this matter was, um, approved by a majority of the council, and this is, um, the findings of fact that go, that go with that.
Okay. Alright, um-
So why are we voting on it again, Mr. or Miss, uh, Mrs. City Attorney?
Because under the, um, I'm sorry, let me make sure I have the right item. Um, under the, uh, changes to, um, the general statutes, those findings of fact have to come back to the council for actual, to actually be voted on.
Alright. Um, and, Mr. Mayor, um, I am going to support this. Um, her name is Catherine Holmes, that's H-O-L-M-E-F Weaver. So it, even in the cam, the, it, her name is misspelled. I just, I think it's important we spell people's names right. Thank you.
Alright, so, uh, any other questions? Alright, Councilman Dawkins?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I make a, a motion to approve, uh, item number seven point zero seven as the, uh, order of approval for the findings of fact.
Well, Mr. Mr. Mayor, yeah, well, my motion was, uh, was not alleviated, I guess the, um-
What was your motion, I didn't hear?
Well, it was for an up-and-down-
I second that.
Thank you.
Yeah, so you were gonna do, did you wanna make the motion for the up-and-down vote?
Well, I guess it's just, just the finding of facts at this time, so, um, this is to say that we've approved the eight finding of facts and this is just to vote on that, not the approval of the actual-
That's correct, and what I understood, you wanted just to have a separate-
Yeah, I just wanted to have a separate vote on the item.
So I'm, I'm confused now. So, so SOP is coming back to us, SUP was voted on, passed, now it's back to reaffirm the findings of facts but not approve the SUP? What, what is the action tonight?
You are approving the written findings of fact.
As, and therefore approving the, the special use permit?
That's correct.
Okay.
So your vote, I believe, um, at the meeting was-
It was six to four.
Right.
Alright.
So certainly if those persons voting in opposition wanted to do that again, that's fine.
Yes, because of course if we vote for the finding of facts, it's all, it's like we're voting for the actual item. And I want to go on the record to keep my vote.
Okay. Alright, I got you, sir.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's an up-and-down vote, that's what you requested?
Yes, sir.
So we had a motion on the floor by Councilman Dawkins, I think it was seconded by Councilmember Banks, McGlaughlin. Uh, any further discussion on this item? Alright, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Alright, uh, councilmember Ingram?
Green.
Councilmember Waddell?
Red.
Alright, so those voting in favor, Councilman Dawkins, Banks, McGlaughlin, Colvin, Jensen, and Kinston, and, uh, Ingram. Those voting opposed, Councilman Davis, uh, Wright, Councilman Hare, and Councilmember Waddi- Councilmember Waddell. Alright, you got it, Madam Clerk? Alright, motion carries six-four. Alright, item seven point zero one zero, Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is Ms. Shoneman on the line?
I think she's outside.
Better than that, she's walking through the door. Hello, ma'am?
I'd like to just give Ms. Shoneman, she and I had a conversation and, uh, I wanted to make sure that she had an opportunity to sort of weigh in on a bit of the dialogue that we had so that we can go ahead and take this vote.
Hello?
In, in regards to what she, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, she, she's here.
Hi, Councilmember Waddell.
Ms. Shoneman, hi, hi Bianca, how are you? I wanted to give her an opportunity to sort of weigh in on what she understood some of our concerns to be. Um, and I also just wanted to make it very clear because she and I did have this conversation, and I think whenever something is done, um, publicly and then privately and then publicly, it should be handled publicly. But I said during the meeting that I felt that it was presumptuous for Ms. Shoneman to have started spending money without an allocation of funding voted on by the council. She and I did discuss that, and I gave her some, some clarification on the fact that I was not necessarily attacking her, and I don't want anybody in the community to think that it was an attack on Ms. Shoneman. It was simply a restatement of what our process is in government, that nothing is final through consensus. It is not final until there's an actual vote. And so Ms. Shoneman, I just wanted to be very clear about that publicly, that there was not an attack on you. I did not intend for it to come across as if I was being derogatory to you if it did. And I most certainly wanted to make sure that people understood that we did have a dialogue and there was some clarity provided surrounding that. Lastly, I wanted to ensure that everybody understands that when we, when councilmember, um, Dawkins brought this and said that there should be some, some, some community funding looked at, my expectation was not that it would go back to the downtown merchants for them to ante up all of the, the money for this. This is most certainly being heralded as a community event, and I explained to Ms. Shoneman that I believe that there are businesses throughout the city of Fayetteville who would be more than willing to support some sort of event like this through their, their donation dollars. And so I don't ever want our merchants downtown to think that just because an event is hosted downtown, that it is my belief that they should be the ones who are expected to be the bulk of the funders for those activities. Because if it benefits the entire city, the whole city should, should share in the responsibility. But Ms. Shoneman, I just wanted to give you a few minutes to, eh, explain what you understood our concerns to be and how you've addressed those before we move forward with this vote. Thank you.
Hello?
Hi, guys, so good to see you again, thanks for having me. I saw a hand up, can I answer a question?
Mr. Mayor, I was ready to make a motion on that sheet.
Right, so, okay, so, uh, Ms. Shoneman, you have the floor for a moment to just clarify, uh, whatever needs to be clarified.
Certainly, I know you guys are pressed for time, so I, I do understand exactly what, uh, councilmember Waddell was speaking about, consensus versus, um, council action item. Also, um, we fully recognize that, um, the sponsorship opportunities exist beyond, uh, just the downtown fabric. And for that, I've included a sponsorship package tonight on your desk, so if you know of any corporations that would be interested in playing a part in our first-ever New Year's Eve district spectacular, we'd have, love to have your corporate partners. My information is widely available throughout the internet, or you can contact Doug, he'll give it to you. Um, anyway, we are here to make this a great night, we are crunched for time and ready to move.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Any questions, Councilman Dawkins?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve budget order amendments twenty-two dash three to appropriate sixty-five thousand for the New Year's Eve celebration.
So it's a motion by councilmember Dawkins, sec- It was seconded by councilmember Ingram. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Yeah, well, she did too, it, y'all all came in at the same time, so I ha- I have to call it just best we can, guys. But that gets, that shows you got a lot of support, ma'am, so-
It does, thank you.
Alright, so it's a motion, uh, councilmember Dawkins, seconded by councilmember Ingram, and plus, uh, any other discussion on the motion? Council, I'll look to you for your votes on this item. Alright, councilmember Ingram?
Green.
Councilmember Waddell?
Red.
Okay, alright, so, Madam Clerk, uh, those voting in, in favor, Councilman Davis, Dawkins, Banks, McGlaughlin, Wright, Colvin, Jensen, uh, Hare, and Ingram, and, uh, Kinston. Those voting opposed, councilmember Waddell, motion carries. Alright, thank you, ma'am.
Have a good night.
Alright, item eight point zero, evidentiary hearings. Mr. Harmer, Dr. Newton?
Yeah, well, I was going, um- Dr. Newton, so that, uh, the sixty or so people who are on the other side of this wall know that we are, we are getting ready to have the evidentiary hearings. There are two of them this evening. Uh, logistically, it's a little bit of a challenge to make sure that we're getting every, all the information in. We do know that the applicant is here with their, uh, legal representation and expects they'll be able to make their presentation as the outline generally indicates for SUPs. What I'm not so sure of is that in our attempt to make sure that we had everybody signed in, that we have, but we do have two special use cases tonight. They'll be presented by the applicant with actions to be taken by the city council. All individuals wishing to speak as a witness should have signed up before the start of the meeting, and I do not know what our numbers look like now, I know there was an effort to try to get those in. But we have to go through the process of having them sworn in.
How, how many do we have signed up?
So for item eight point oh one, SUP twenty-one ten, we have nine speakers. And for, uh, item eight point oh two, SUP twenty-one oh seven, we have one speaker.
At, at your discretion, I would like to suggest that those nine people be allowed to come in here. They do have masks, and that way they're going to be able to hear all the testimony. It's very difficult to hear it, I've, uh, turned some of the volume up, but there are a lot of, there's a lot of people out there. I think others are going to be listening from what we've just heard in terms of the speakers. That way they can all be sworn in at the same time. Is that acceptable, sir?
Uh, yes, it is, and then we'll, uh, if you let them escort them in, we'll let clerks swear everyone in.
Put them up, yes, I think that would be the best way to do it. So for those of you who are intending to, uh, give evidence, there's nine who have signed, uh, please make your way to the security officer at the door. This may be the most silence you have for the next hour.
Don't say that.
Alright. Alright. Quick count, that looks like nine attorneys, ten, nine attorneys? Alright. So anyone wishing to speak at the hearing must provide competent material, substantial evidence to the city council under oath. Anyone planning on speaking during this evidentiary hearing, please stand and be sworn now by the assistant city clerk, deputy city clerk, to swear affirm that the testimony you give is true.
Do you sure the testimony you are about to give is truthful, so help you God?
Craig Harmon will now present the information so that you understand what this case is about, after which, uh, mayor, we'll have you make sure that you open the hearing and we work through the script. I'll be off to the side if needed.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and council.
Good evening, sir.
So the first case we have before you is an evidentiary hearing, case SUP twenty-one ten. Uh, it is a property located at five forty-two Andrews Road. It's approximately five and a half, uh, ten and a half acres. This is a special use permit to allow thirty-four single-family attached dwellings or townhomes in a single-family residential ten district. Uh, just to give you an idea of where this property is located, uh, Pine Forest High School across the street. Uh, you've got the elementary school right beside of it. Uh, this is kind of, uh, well, right beside the elementary school on Andrews Road. Currently, this part is already in the city, it is zoned SFTN. All of the blank area you see is what's, uh, county property currently. Uh, all of those areas, uh, that you see in white currently are planned neighborhood development, uh, zoning in the county. Uh, the city's land use plan calls for a low-density residential, uh, on this particular property and most of what surrounds it other than the two schools. Uh, this is the site plan that's been submitted with this application, uh, showing the placement, the basic placement of the thirty-four townhomes and the, uh, lot subdivision that will go along with that. Um, again, keep in mind with this that, uh, townhomes are permitted use, uh, in this district with the special use permit. Uh, just a couple of photos, this is the property that we're looking at. We've got the elementary school again, uh, the ball fields for the high school, and then to the west, another residential, uh, neighborhood that backs up to this particular property. Again, you, you'll be basing your, your, uh, findings to, or your, your, uh, everything tonight on these eight findings. Uh, if you have any questions of staff, please, uh, hold those until after the evidentiary hearing has been completed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Alright, uh, this time I will now open the evidentiary hearing, I ask applicants to begin to make their presentation of the case. Lonnie Player?
Council would bear with me for a moment, I have demonstrative exhibits, my, uh, I chose not to put my- technological deficits on display for the entire- City to see tonight, so I, I have old-fashioned postboard. And I will put-
Don't have that grid, council.
I will put them up so that you can see them clearly, excuse me, so you can see them clearly while we're talking. You've already seen this one, which is the site map. This is probably better bears for you, this is the proposed master plan for cottages. Can the council hear me with my mask on, or should I take it down? Alright. Thank you. Members of the council, my name is Lonnie Player, I represent CRA Home Builders. This is our application for a special use permit. I'll briefly explain the project. The proposed subdivision depicted on the, uh, depicted on the site plan map which you have before you is the cottages at Stonegate, which is located at five four-two Andrews Road in North Fayetteville. The cottages is a, uh, proposed thirty-four unit townhouse duplex development on the depicted ten-point-five acre parcel. There will be two units per building, and each of the thirty-four units will have its own lot. It is bordered to the west and north by residential housing, to the east by Howard Hall Elementary School, and to the south by Pine Forest High School. Also, to the north of the tract- Let me see better on this design. To the north of the tract is a wetlands boundary and an area which includes foraging habitat for the red cockaded woodpecker. The townhouse is proposed to be constructed, you can see them depicted here in the proposed site plan layout here. Each will be between eighteen hundred and two thousand square feet in size. We estimate that they will list when constructed in the neighborhood of two-hundred-twenty-five to two-hundred-fifty thousand dollars apiece.
to two-hundred-fifty thousand dollars apiece, which is comparable in terms of existing, in terms of square footage to the existing surrounding neighborhoods, but which is more affordable to a wider range of potential buyers than single-family homes in this area. As you can see, the cottages will be accessed directly off Andrews Road. They will be connected to city water and sewer. There is added depth in the western boundary lots, which will provide additional visual buffer to the residential areas to the west. The stormwater sewer and detention system has been designed to meet the city's current standard of accommodating a twenty-year rainfall event. The detention pond is depicted here. These lots are being developed by my client for sale only, not rental. My client is not the builder. However, the builder's under consideration. Our first-tier residential home builders of new construction for sale only, not for rental. And my client is well aware of the surrounding red-cockaded woodpecker habitat, and has brought the same to the attention of the Federal Fish and Wildlife Administration, which has approved the site plan as presented tonight as not disturbing that habitat. And I believe in your materials, you each have a copy of a letter from the United States Department of the Interior to that effect. If you do not, I have a copy of that letter with me tonight to distribute to each of you. Now, my client is aware that the surrounding community has questions and concerns about the project. Some of these are within our control, some aren't. Traffic. We're aware that Andrews Road is very heavily traveled between school drop-off and pickup hours, and we're confident that DOT is aware of that as well. DOT's decision to improve or expand Andrews Road, and the timing of those improvements are beyond our control. They're the state's decisions. They're not yours, and they're not ours. If the DOT requires that we install a turn lane, or even a stoplight to facilitate traffic control, we're willing to do that. But the decision to four-lane Andrews Road is not ours to make. Schools. We're aware that the neighbors are concerned that Howard Hall Elementary and Pine Forest High are already overcrowded. As with DOT, we're confident that the county school board is aware of this as well. Also, like DOT, the decision to expand either of these schools is not yours, and is not my client's. It's the school board's. Those decisions are beyond our control. Now, this might be a good time to point out to the council and to those concerned neighbors in attendance tonight that your vote on this special use permit is not determinative of whether or not my client can develop this property. This property is zoned SF-10. We can, through submission starting tomorrow, if we were to so choose, put up to forty-five single-family homes on this property without going through the SUP process. This is only to say that your decision tonight will not solve the problems presented in the schools, nor those of traffic on Andrews Road. The property will be developed in any event. The question is simply whether the housing will be thirty-four more affordable townhome duplex units, available to a broader range of people, or not. Sidewalks. This council is well aware that the UDO requires that we build a sidewalk down the length of the subdivision's Andrews Road frontage, and we, of course, intend to do that. Noise. Construction makes noise. Whether you're building a single-family home or a townhome, construction makes noise. There's nothing we can do about that. All I can say is this project won't be any more noisy than any other project. We've already addressed stormwater. We've already addressed sale versus rental. Property values. This is what the neighbor's concerns really boil down to. I think it's clear from the submissions to council and from some postings on the Nextdoor app that they fear my client is building low-income housing, and then it will drive down the values of their own homes. My client is not building low-income housing. What my client is doing is building housing with a value per square foot comparable or even superior to the neighboring homes, just of a smaller size. The townhome duplex concept before you tonight will achieve the dual result of maintaining or improving the neighboring property values while simultaneously opening the area to a wider audience of home buyers through greater affordability. And many of you are aware of the pendency of House Bill 854, which is sponsored in part by Representative Billy Richardson, which seeks to address the state's affordable housing crisis by making it easier to build townhomes and duplexes in single-family zoning districts without the need for special use permits. This is an effort fully supported by the National Association of Home Builders, which has determined that while only forty-two percent of North Carolina households can afford an average-priced, single-family home, fully sixty-five percent of the same households can afford to purchase townhomes of this type. The need for more townhouses can be traced directly to the tremendous inflation in overall land values, which we've seen very starkly on the local level since the start of the pandemic. More expensive land means greater need to build more housing on existing parcels to keep home prices attainable. The council should also bear in mind, in addition to what staff has informed you of today, the townhomes were allowed, were in allowed use without an SUP in Fayetteville's pre-UDO zoning classifications. My client has owned the property continuously since before that date. Allowing the current SUP would serve only to restore to my client property rights in which it was already vested prior to the passage of the UDO. Now, I have here with me tonight Brian Armstrong, the owner of CRA Home Builders. I have his site planner, Paul Satoff, and I have registered forester, Walter Thomas, all of whom are available to answer your questions. We're also prepared to address each of the required findings of fact in support of the SUP either at this time or at some point prior to the close of this hearing at the pleasure of the council. Thank you. I'll be happy to answer any questions, or I'll open the floor to my clients.
Thank you, Mr. Player. I think we will move to the next speaker, and then we'll entertain questions after.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor, the next speaker is Mr. Brian Armstrong.
Okay. Good evening, sir.
Hey, good evening. My name is Brian Armstrong. I am the vice president of CRA Home Builders. We are here tonight to present our case to do the SUP so we can build this townhome duplex concept on this property that we have owned for many, many years. We've, you know, been looking at this piece of property for a while. We considered trying to do, you know, maybe an office-type use, something to, you know, be compatible with the nearby schools, you know, daycare or learning center or something of that sort, multifamily, single-family. And when it came down to it, we just felt that a duplex townhome concept would do well in this area. So we started down that process, and it wasn't until three-fourths of the way through that we realized that any townhome or duplex product has to go through the SUP process. So then we, you know, embarked on that, and, you know, we're here now to, to present that. Like Mr. Player said, this current SF-10 zoning does allow for a greater density on a tract this size if we were to implement it and do the necessary site work to bring this site up to its full capability. However, that is more expensive, so we felt that this duplex townhome product on the current property as it is would be the most efficient, you know, for, for us and as well as the home buyers.
Thank you, sir.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I think each of my witnesses can speak to the findings of fact, and that may help to move us along a little bit better. If I could approach the podium.
Please.
Thank you.
Madam Attorney, can they pull up the eight findings of fact so we can read along with that?
If you could just go over there.
I think Mr. Player has them and is going to, is prepared to ask, ask his clients some questions as it relates to those eight findings of fact.
Okay. I was just saying for our...
Yes, I think Craig just put them up on this screen right here.
Will it translate to the screen that I can see?
Wear your glasses, Mayor.
It still ain't that good. All right.
Mr. Armstrong, could you please state your name to the right?
So let him come to this mic right here, Lonny.
And will you please state your occupation, please?
I am the vice president of Armstrong Family One, Inc., CNS Commercial Properties, and CRA Home Builders.
And are you familiar with the, with the SUP application that's been filed for cottages at Stonegate?
I am.
That's been presented to council this evening?
Yes.
All right. In indicating, Mr. Armstrong, how the special use complies with all applicable use-specific standards in the city code of ordinances, is it your understanding that the cottages at Stonegate complies with the applicable SF-10 and Zero Lot Line standards as described in the city of Fayetteville UDO?
Yes.
Is it your understanding as well that single-family attached dwellings are permitted in the SF-10 zoning district with a special use permit?
Yes.
Is it your further understanding and intention that any single-family attached dwelling standards as described in the UDO will be met?
Yes.
Now, with respect to the compatibility of the special use with the character and the uses permitted in the zoning district of surrounding lands, is it your understanding, Mr. Armstrong, that the development is consistent and compatible with the surrounding land uses?
Yes.
Is it your further understanding that the site is bordered by an existing residential development to the north, an existing residential development to the west, Howard Hall Elementary School to the east, Pine Forest High School to the south?
Yes, correct.
Is it your further understanding that existing developments along Andrews Road consist mainly of institutional, commercial, and a variety of residential housing types, including single-family detached and multifamily?
Yes.
Is it your further understanding that single-family attached dwellings would be compatible with those existing uses?
Yes.
In indicating, Mr. Armstrong, how the special use avoids significant adverse impact on surrounding lands regarding service delivery, parking, and loading, odors, noise, glare, and vibration, is it your understanding that the development of single-family detached dwelling units will not, or of these dwelling units, rather, will not adversely impact the surrounding lands?
Correct.
And is it your further understanding that the surrounding properties consist of the uses that you've just described to the council, those being residential and institutional?
Yes.
And have you had the opportunity to consider the impact of adverse noise or odor impacts from the development?
Not any more than any other, you know, development.
Do you, and do you foresee adverse noise or odor impacts arising from the development?
No.
Is it your intention that standards regarding traffic, parking, loading, or glare will be met?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong, in describing and demonstrating how the special use is configured to minimize those adverse effects, including visual impacts, have you had the opportunity to consider, and have you considered that the development will have no adverse visual impacts to the adjacent properties?
Yes.
The south, is it your understanding, again, that the south of the property is bordered by Andrews Road and Countryside Drive?
Yes.
Is it your further understanding that the proposed lots bordering the westernmost boundary provide more depth, which will provide a visual buffer to bordering residential lots as is depicted on this map?
Yes.
The existing wetland along the north side of the property, along with the proposed open space and stormwater management, is it your intention that these will provide a natural buffer to the properties to the north?
Yes.
With respect, Mr. Armstrong, to how the special use avoids significant deterioration of water and air resources, wildlife habitat, scenic resources, or other natural resources, is it your understanding and intention that this development will not increase environmental impacts more so than other allowable residential uses in the SF-10 zoning district?
Yes.
And in so doing, you intend to follow and will follow all applicable federal, state, and local environmental regulation standards and laws, including those related to stormwater runoff and the red-cockaded woodpecker?
Yes.
With respect to how the special use maintains safe ingress and egress onto the site and safe road conditions, is it your understanding and intention that an entrance on Andrews Road will provide all vehicular access to the property?
Correct.
Is it your further understanding that access to the residential units will be from newly-developed roadways that will comply with all applicable traffic and roadway standards?
Yes.
Is it your further understanding that this will provide sufficient safe ingress and egress onto and around the site?
Yes.
Is it your intention to comply within any NC DOT guidelines and mandates with respect to the construction of the subdivision, including any mandates with respect to the installation of turn lanes and/or stoplights?
Yes.
And is it your further intention that all roadway widths and turning radius will meet the applicable standards?
Yes.
All right. With respect to how the special use allows for the protection of property values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop the uses in the zoning district, is it your understanding that the proposed development is compatible with those adjacent properties?
Yes.
Is it your understanding that the proposed density, land use, and proposed plan are consistent with the standards set forth in the UDO and in the Fayetteville zoning documents?
Yes.
Is it your further understanding, based on the proposed densities and zoning classifications of the surrounding properties and the proximity to Andrews Road and Ramsey Street, that the proposed development cottages at Stonegate is compatible and consistent with the surrounding neighborhood?
Yes.
Is it your further understanding that the surrounding properties consist of similar residential zoning classifications and uses?
Yes.
And that the property is bordered by two existing schools?
Yes.
And that the buffers that you have shown the, the buffers that you have shown the council are in existence and will remain in this SUP?
Yes.
Format. Is it your understanding that the special use complies with all other relevant city, state, and federal laws and regulations that we've spoken about tonight, including those bearing on the red-cockaded woodpecker?
Yes.
And that the development complies with the UDO based on the request of the special use permit?
Yes.
And that the project follows the standards as described in the Fayetteville UDO related to zoning district and zero lot line development?
Yes.
Thank you. I have no further questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that, and members of the council, I believe we've addressed all of the necessary findings for special use permit through competent testimony.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, any other speakers?
Yes, sir. We had Mr. Paul Satoff.
Will wave.
And Mr. Walter Thomas.
Will wave as well.
Next, we have Mr. Charlie King.
King, good evening. Good evening, sir.
And good evening, council members. Thank you very much for recognizing me and giving me an opportunity to speak. I appreciate it very much. My name is Charlie King, and just for the record, I would add one point here. In Mr. Player's testimony, he did make a swipe at the nature of my testimony by suggesting that all those who are opposed to this are concerned about their property values. I want to say for the record that whatever happens tonight, or whatever happens on that, on that piece of property, will not affect my property values. However, it will affect the quality of my property, and that's what I would like to address. I manage and live on a family-owned, working timberland that has been materially affected in the past by developments of CRA LLC at the Stonegate development, and it will be materially affected by the proposed development of the cottages at Stonegate. I request that the application be denied because the proposal as submitted fails to meet, at least, meet at least two of the eight required standards. Now, I have standing in this regard, as an affected landowner in both the county and the city, my family's property spans the city limit boundaries. I believe also that I have standing because my family's land is immediately downhill and downstream from the development in question tonight. First of all, with reference to standard two about the characterization of the land, the application simply misrepresents the character of the surrounding lands. You heard tonight that to the north, there is residential development, and then in the very next moment, you heard from Mr. Player that to the north, there is red-cockaded woodpecker conservation lands. Well, which is it? Conservation and forestry lands are to the north of this property. Conservation and forestry lands are to the north of this property, contrary to what the application reads, which says, and I quote, "The site is bordered by an existing residential development to the north," end quote. Indeed, the staff review of the proposal makes the same misstep, statement. In describing the surrounding area, it says, "To the north is an undeveloped area," that's a quote, yet later in the same document, it says, quote, "The site is bordered by an existing residential development to the north." Well, in fact, the site is bordered immediately to the north by a parcel, and I'll save reading the REID number, it's in my letter, which has been previously established by CRA, and I quote here from the letter sent by the U.S. Federal Fish and Wildlife Service, "to provide some residual red-cockated woodpecker habitat to support conservation." And that's from that memo that's in your packet dated 24 August 2020 from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Now, while CRA is to be applauded for their interest in conservation, this is not a, quote, "existing residential development," end quote, nor is it an undeveloped area, as your staff maintains. A conservation area is not undeveloped. It may be absent buildings, but legally, it is not undeveloped land. It is spoken for. Meanwhile, my family's land, Stone Mountain Farm LLC, is directly to the north of this conservation land. Our land is a Cumberland County Volunteer Agricultural District. It's a registered farm under the Farm Service Administration, and we have contracts with the Natural Resources Serv, uh, uh, Service Conservation Service. We cultivate longleaf pine for income and for habitat resource purposes. Sharing the border with the CRA conservation land is also the Cook family land, which is under the same active timber management as ourselves, and you will hear from the Cook family shortly. Now, since my family lands are about a half mile from the property in question, it might be reasonable to ask, why am I concerned? And again, I reiterate that the importance is not distance, but topography. My land is downhill from this property. Everything that flows from there will end up good, bad, or indifferent in my property, as I am at the bottom of the valley. Now, the staff recommendation with respect to standard two ends by saying, quote, "Single-family attached dwellings would be compatible with the existing uses of the area, which consists of a variety of residential, commercial, and institutional uses." The applicant and the city staff have conveniently left off mention of conservation and forestry use in the surrounding area. Since both applicant and city have failed to describe the surrounding area accurately, it cannot be possible that standard two can be met. The proposed development is incompatible with the purposes of REID 53133129500, that's the conservation land, and 053145260400, that's Stone Mountain Farm LLC. Secondly, the applicant fails to explain how the special use would minimize adverse effects, particularly with respect to stormwater runoff. This is a violation of standard five. The application reads that the existing wetlands along the north side of the property, along with proposed open space and stormwater management devices, will provide a natural buffer to the properties to the north, and the city council recommendation echoes this. Well, I am testifying tonight because my past experience, and what I know from past experience, is that it is the best predictor of future performance.
Objection. It was a postjudicial here. Objection for the record.
All right. I'm sorry, I don't understand the objection.
Well, I think, I think tonight, Madam Attorney, you may want to clarify this. The testimony that we hear is, is, clarify that, Madam Attorney.
Well, I think what you need is to ask Mr. Player to clarify his case before the objection.
What, what is, what is the objection to?
And then you...
I'm sorry, Madam, City Council. The, the objection, Mr. Mayor, simply is that the gentleman is bringing up matters which have no bearing on tonight's agenda, that are speculative in nature, that tend to, that tend towards slander of my client. They have no bearing in a postjudicial hearing. Therefore, I, I have no objection to him speaking. I'm simply preserving my objection for the record.
Mr. Mayor, there has been notices of violation issued by the NC Department of Environmental Quality. These are not hearsay things, they're not just somebody's opinion, they're substantive material matters, and they were, they, they were issued, and they were, and they described the performance of stormwater management procedures by CRA.
So, so what, what would do, Mr. Player, I want to give him the opportunity to finish his testimony. We'll did not take the objections for, for the record, and then we'll come back to it. Please proceed, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The Stonegate Development, which is immediately to the east of the proposed one, was developed by CRA, and it's illustrative. Since its groundbreaking, I have been on the alert for construction-related sediment flows into the streams and lakes downhill from Stonegate Development, and there have been several. Indeed, my first acquaintance with Mr. George Armstrong of CRA was when I contacted him following the failure of a temporary construction sediment pond at the west end of White Moss Court, very near the current proposal. The failure resulted in a significant discharge of sediment to the lake and stream below. Now, in all fairness, Mr. Armstrong quickly fixed the problem and repaired the sediment pond, but the damage had been done. Ultimately, the NC Department of Environmental Quality cited developed builders, two years running in 2020 and 2021, for failure to manage the stormwater runoff. And in your packet, there is a photograph labeled 20 January, 12 January 2020, and if you look at that photograph, you will see upstream and downstream, and the difference in that stream is the stormwater runoff coming from approved stormwater management devices put in by CRA. So I argue that there is a pattern of poor performance on stormwater management.
So if, if you could, sir, if we could speak to this specific case?
Okay, I will. I'll move on then.
Yes, sir.
Even more concerning is that there's no mention in this application of the abandoned dam under which all of the stormwater from this project, and I am speaking now specifically about the cottages of Stonegate, all of the runoff will run under an abandoned dam about half a mile north of this project, within the red-cockated preservation area. The small footprint of the project, its location at the top of a valley, ensures that all of the runoff will inescapably run under an eroding and abandoned dam. And there is a, a screen capture of the county GIS in your packet that shows where that dam is, and a picture, which you'll see by the next speaker, of the nature of that dam. All the water, plus whatever additional water, comes from the increased impermeable surfaces, as well as the naturally occurring runoff along the half-mile run of this valley, will go under a 70-year-old-plus dam, which, which has a badly corroded corrugated metal culvert, and the face of the dam is eroding badly now. If either the dam's forward face collapses, or the culvert itself collapses, it will impound to store more water, and ultimately, it may lead to a collapse of this dam catastrophically, wrecking havoc on the pond and waters downstream.
Mr. Mayor, I have to, again, we have nothing before us, other than this testimony. We have no, we have no expertise.
I have submitted photographs, and the, this dam, by the way, is on CRA property. They own it.
Well...
I don't have the, I, I do not have the advantage of giving this letter.
Yeah, Mr. King, we, we typically, during, during these evidentiary hearings, try to bring expert testimony, whatever documentation you have, we give it to the clerk and give him an opportunity to review it.
I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. I am on record now as warning the city council of the problem with this dam, and Mr. Player's absence of knowledge of this dam, which is on CRA property, is not my problem. That's his.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And so, in conclusion, I believe that this proposal mischaracterizes the surrounding land. It promises sufficient stormwater management, but past experiences impeach that claim, and it fails to account for this feature, which I already mentioned. Mr. Mayor and council members, CRA can do whatever they like with their land, I don't care, but they cannot do with their land that which does not comport with law and which harms their neighbors, and I maintain that this proposal neither comports with the law and that it will harm me, my family, and my land. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right. Madam Clerk, we have any other speakers before we go across?
Yes, sir. We have four more speakers. Our next speaker is Ms. Sonia Dyer.
All right. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm really glad to be able to be here tonight, and, you know, I've never done this before, and so if I kind of get objected to, hey, it's all up to experience, right? So, you know, I first just want to say that, you know, Mr. King's great, and he came out here with a lot of technical advice about what's going on in the area, but I think what you'll find is when you walk out these doors here, especially down in, in the lower portion of this building, you'll find a significant amount of people, and while in the greater scheme of all things Fayetteville, and the city of Fayetteville may not be a large number, quite frankly, it represents about 75% of my neighborhood, and that's, that's who I'm here to speak for. I was kind of unofficially elected by the, the neighborhood to represent the points that I'm talking about now, and so I, I just want to say, first of all, I agree with Mr. King, you know, that the slide about property values, I can guarantee you that I've spoken to most of the people outside of these doors who are very concerned. You heard the applause as Mr. King finished up, and I can guarantee you, not once was it mentioned about property value. However, the main thing that was discussed with me, and why there is such a concern about this, it has nothing to do with low-income housing or property values and all of that, but there was a specific reason why we bought these properties, and quite frankly, I have to 100% agree. So if you haven't heard, my name is Sonia Dyer. I'm a resident here of Woodbridge Neighborhood, kind of the one that you were talking about here. I bought my home last year after deciding to retire from the Army after 24 years of service, and I did that as an engineer officer. And so for the last 10 years, I was an engineer for the Army, in which basically developing Fort Bragg and a lot of locations overseas in South Carolina, and quite frankly, Florida, Arizona, and all kinds of different types of places, deserts to watersheds, to all kinds of locations, and so that's where I come up. I wouldn't call myself an expert, but I certainly have a lot of experience in all of the things that we're discussing here tonight. Since I was an engineer officer, construction, property, development, all these things you guys have done, I've done for many years now, environmentals and permits, and I'm usually the one on the other side of the, the table, if you will, fighting for these permits and what have you, and trying to get everything going forward. But I chose my house not because of the property value, or because of where it is, or it was in or out of Fayetteville, but I chose it because it was an older home that was in a wooded area. I had the woods behind me where the protected wetlands were. I have federal grounds around me, state grounds around me, and the entire road, Andrews Road, is a wooded area, and all of the developments in that area are single-family homes that are spread apart, larger homes, and, and quite frankly, the entire character of the area is why we bought those homes, and you'll hear every person out there, if you care to discuss with them, why they bought that area and what their concerns are here for tonight. So I'm here to maintain my house and to defend the neighborhood for the nature and the character that I brought the property to begin with, and quite frankly, everybody outside these doors. In order for this special permit to be allowed, the construction cannot violate approximately eight impacts, I think we heard a lot about those, but I'm here to suggest that it violates almost all of them, despite, you know, Mr. King, you know, insisted on those two, and I don't disagree with that, but quite frankly, of the three wooded areas, I have a driveway-like entrance into my neighborhood, it's secluded, you could barely even tell there's a neighborhood back there, and we love that. It's great. It's one of the main things that we love about this area, and that will be eroded. I was told that the woods behind my house was protected because of the watershed and environmental, and I proudly display, even on social media and all of this stuff, about how I have two of the red-cockated woodpecker tokens in my trees, in my property, and so those are very close and within the boundaries that you see here tonight. You can imagine my shock when my two favorite things about the property that I just purchased are going to be taken or diminished by this permit, and that's to decrease the amount of wooded areas and some of the environmental impacts that it's going to have. This in itself violates a special permit by affecting the natural wildlife habit, the visual impacts and the character and nature of the surrounding areas. Now, I get it, you know, you were right, okay? So if you have a token bit of surrounded wooden areas, and, you know, I do appreciate that, but I think it really does not speak to, if you drive through our neighborhood, and there was only one picture, by the way, the pictures that were provided was three of the school, but only one of our neighborhood, and it was one house within our neighborhood. When they built the homes in my neighborhood, you had to build them with not taking down trees, and listen, was absolutely necessary to the neighborhood, and that was a part of it, and that's why everybody loves this neighborhood and the surrounding areas, and so that speaks to the nature and the character, that is the problem of us losing this area. The construction will weaken the character of the entire road, of this entire community on Andrews Road. I don't think the contractor has any real rationale for the special permit except to make more buildings and make more money off being able to pack in more abilities. Like it or not, whether it is or not, that's the only thing that I can see that can be the difference. I understand and appreciate the, having affordable housing, but quite frankly, there is no issue up here in North Fayetteville for that. The buildings are going to be townhouses packed between neighborhoods and larger spaced-out houses, therefore, further impacting the nature and character of the area. There is no way that this will not impact the value of the surrounding homes and areas where most of the owners are looking to get away from the main city life, but remain close to shopping area, and there is not too many places in Fayetteville where you can do that anymore. I am all for development, I've done it my entire career, I am all about, you know, furthering the progress of, of the area, but there's very little in Fayetteville where you can get away from the hustle and bustle of the city, but still near shopping area, because I have two small kids at home, most of my neighborhood is retired, but, you know, staying close to that shopping area is important. I'm very concerned for the impact of the watershed between the neighborhood as well. I know there's a lot of discussion about is it or not, and whether it's in the construction area, and I agree, it's not within the construction area. I say, and, and Mr. King kind of alluded to it, but the problem is, is not the construction itself, but the impact that it'll have to the surrounding area. So you can't discuss a single parcel of land and assume that that's okay. You have to discuss the impact and how it affects the entire surrounding area. I'm not talking about water in the parcel, I'm talking about the watershed, okay? That's a whole different conversation, because when you look at water and what it does, you have to look at how it flows and where it goes, because that's the impact that you have, and if you try and think about that after the fact, you're too late. You're too late. So if you don't understand what's going on with the water, where it's going to go, which is obviously, and I get it, not, not directly to this permit, but the violation's already been there, most likely because they underestimated the water, the significant changes due to Florence. We had our 100-year flood mark. It is now in state law that you have to, you know, take a look at 100-year water marks now to see what the flood levels are. So what are the impacts post-Florence in this area, to the 70-year-old dam, to the significant amount of construction that has already occurred in our area? Andrews Road has three, four developments that are going on, so who's doing the watershed impacts in that environmentally protected area and the surrounding state grounds, property, federal, and all of the constructions that's going on? So I refuse to believe that there is absolutely no way that this doesn't impact not only the farm that we were talking about, but those coming around, because the watershed comes all the way around and comes back into Andrews Road. So all of that, the construction, the new construction will all be affected. That's just how it works, that's how watersheds work, and I have never seen anybody being able to study that or discuss that impact there. The reality is, there's a lot much bigger issues, so we can talk, you know, red-cockated woodpeckers, that's always a fun conversation in the Army, and we can talk about watersheds and, and get technical on that, but quite frankly, there's a larger issue at hand. This, this is adjacent to an elementary school. This is across from a high school, and I'd like to, I would like to see the impacts to the traffic of the area. I understand that the construction cannot affect that, that's not within their purview to do, they're simply here to build houses, but the reality is, is that there are significant issues with Andrews Road and the construction, and not, and Andrews Road, again, the proposal is to make it a four-lane highway, that just furthers the problem that we have with this area, because if you live on Andrews Road or off Andrews Road in one of these developments, that's the last thing that you want. That's absolutely the last thing that you want and why you live there. And so increasing the road is, is exactly opposite of what we would like to do with that area, but it also impacts Ramsey. I passed two accidents on Ramsey, or one on Ramsey and one on MacArthur, and there's accidents there all of the time. If you're trying to get through on MacArthur, it's, it's impossible, and so packing more and more people into this area without looking at that is obviously an issue. Large amount of kids walk there every single morning. It's not just the traffic to the school. The traffic is a problem, it backs up really bad, but quite frankly, if you've ever been there in the morning in the school, there's a significant amount of kids who have to cross that road every single day, high schoolers and elementary, who walk that road every single day. So I, I would, I would suggest to you that you're also looking at a significant potential traffic issue with the kids that are going over there. You have a school that is already overcrowded, again, not due to the construction, but you're asking for increased, and, and a significant increase to the amount of people that you're putting into a smaller area, which is only going to more heavily impact that school. You have unsightly and potentially dangerous trailers that surround these schools, and it's only going to add to that. it's only going to add to that. So how many kids are that? The reality is, is what I'm speaking to is, I'm begging the city to understand the implications not only to the construction but the impact of the increased amount of people. So the permit is a special use permit, I absolutely understand that he's going to develop and do what he wants on here. I get it, been there, done that. However, what I'm asking for is don't cram even more people in it because you're going to exacerbate a problem that already exists and it's going to make it further to that problem. So while the nature and the character and the watershed and the wildlife and all of that, what it's doing is further impacting the nature and the problem of the schools, the traffic, et cetera. But yes, I agree, you can't do anything about that, you'll be able to develop your land and your property. What I'm asking for is to not allow it to maximize with a special permit an increased amount of people for that area. I disagree with allowing this permit because it'll impact the character and nature and the visual impacts and it certainly decreases the values of the neighborhoods. That's important, that's absolutely important. Right when people moved in here in the last ten, fifteen years, you couldn't hear the band across the street, you couldn't hear 295, you couldn't hear the roads. Yes, you can now and tearing down that many more trees is only going to impact that. I disagree with it because of the increased and unsteady potential traffic issues that are already the area studies for, but most of all, I disagree with the concern of the safety and security of all of the children, not from one but two adjacent schools. Putting them at risk is simply unacceptable and certainly not a reason to make money. I appreciate you listening to your concerns, I appreciate your objections, I can certainly predict what they are and I don't disagree with from a construction standpoint on what you're doing, but there's a bigger picture at hand of the impact to the city in general and to the people who already live in that area and what we love about our area and that includes not only my neighborhood but all of those on Andrews and to many of the folks that you have standing out here because there is a lot. I thank you for listening to me and to my concerns. I beg you to hear the concerns, to vote against this permit and for all of those that are like it in nature. Thank you. We do have almost the entire neighborhood who signed this petition and it kind of shows you how much dedication that you have that's standing outside these doors. I really appreciate you listening. Thank you very much.
And if you can amend that to the clerk, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Madam clerk?
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Dale Swanner.
We did, we're reconnected. Good morning, no, good afternoon. Or evening!
Feels like morning.
Okay. I'm a little nervous and I've followed many people, obviously, and I don't even draw my ear. All right, here we go. Okay. I appreciate y'all listening and the rural family being here and I'm sure that you can understand because being a native Fayettevillian and here forever, I believe as the Riddles were and your dad, I can appreciate that and so I'm secure in knowing that you'll do the right thing. My name is Dale Swanner. I am, as Charlie alluded to, an Amy Cook's daughter and my father was the developer of Woodbridge. I live in Summerlee Drive, which is in Woodbridge. So, and again, my is more from a personal side and the neighborhood is adjacent and it's to north of the proposed special use permit and I appreciate this because I had no idea what, so it's good to see this. This I did not see and it's interesting and it is good and it looks good on paper and hopefully, you know, whatever happens will look just as good. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you in regards to this special use permit, but there are concerns that myself, my family and our neighbors have had about the potential detrimental effect or impact that this proposed development might have. First, I did want to thank the ones that came before me, they've spoken so well and it is truly amazing and humbling that so many others that are here tonight out, as you hear, wanted to come and it was important to them. We have people from not just our neighborhood, but we have others from the other, some of the other neighborhoods as well that will be impacted and have concerns. And so I also want to acknowledge that we understand private property rights and absolutely respect them, not my family or myself, are against reasonable and responsible development. The decisions regarding future housing developments will sway only towards though the interests and profits of the developer. I mean, that just is natural and that is what developers do. These decisions, any decisions that are rushed for convenience without complete vetting of environmental impact is just not something that we should do. And I stand before you representing many who share a belief that things can be different. We ask for sincere and serious adherence to all construction ordinances and we ask that the wishes and best interests of those that currently live within the impacted area will be considered, as well as those who will reside in any new developments in the future. I know from very personal and lived experience that subdivision development can be done in a reasonable and responsible way in harmony with nature. It can be made to enhance people's lives by providing them with a home in a place that they want to live as opposed to a place where they have to live. I know this because I live in one such subdivision. I know this land and this area very well because I grew up and lived off of Andrews Road all of my life and from when I was born and on. There used to be vast amounts of pine trees, oaks, and there was some farmland where the high school is. In the early nineteen-eighties, my father Edward Cook, a surveyor by trade, designed and broke ground, didn't clear cut, mind you, the Woodbridge subdivision, not because he wanted to make money or a name for himself, because he wanted to create something beautiful in his native hometown so that others could enjoy what he and my family have had for so many years. This led to his unique vision of Woodbridge. His vision was to create a Southern Pines type of subdivision in Northern Fayetteville. Being a surveyor, he so appreciated and respected the beauty of the land in this area with its gentle rolling hills and valleys. He worked endless hours to ensure that the roads and even the houses contoured with the lay of the land.
Ms. Swanner, if you could, try to keep it on the testimony side of it tonight, okay? We're trying to, yes, so we're basically serving as kind of jurors, we let both sides present it. We take into account the expert documents that you give us, so if you can kind of frame your argument around the eight findings.
Okay, yeah, well, okay, well, I don't have any expert stuff. So it's just basically, basically what we're asking and I'm asking is reasonable, responsible development, not against it, but let's make Fayetteville, let's change the way we are. We can't change the past but we can change the future and let's do that, this by being reasonable about clear cutting and doing, and, well, now I'm just totally, I'm sorry, that just totally messed me up. Anyway, I did pass out the red, the two native trees are circled on the, the two trees that have, we have been told, do have active woodpeckers in them, the red-cockated woodpeckers in them and you'll see them, the star is the proposed site, so again, we need to be aware of that. Well, so basically then, I'm not skilled in legal, so what you're asking me to do, I'm not real sure. So, so basically, I guess then I just need to pass since I don't know that I will be giving you anything of substance other than I do ask that you acknowledge that there are wetlands, there are the woodpeckers, there are conservations and that things can be done differently in Fayetteville, we don't have to clear cut everything and we can make a good place for many, very diverse people to live and just would like to see Fayetteville be, make a change and be this unique area that it is, where it is. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Rob Gates.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Fayetteville City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to say a few words tonight. I want to focus directly to you about my concerns for safety with this development proposal. I'm extremely concerned about the great hazard of increased vehicle traffic coming from the proposed development. This traffic will add to the already dangerous vehicle traffic associated with both the nearby elementary school and high school. Students that compose most of the pedestrian traffic will also be further threatened by the increased vehicle traffic. No new traffic lights are currently installed and I'm, there's the possibility, as was alluded to, but it's definitely not a sure thing to enhance the safety that I'm concerned about. The Crosswalk School Safety Guards already have enough challenges without the threat of increased residential traffic nearby. Innocent pedestrians have already been killed by vehicles in this exact area. As you look at the sketch, the proposed entranceway, right now, there is a memorial that was installed, I believe, about four years ago when a pedestrian was killed there walking the road. And that's without the additional thirty-four units, which would probably translate to seventy-eight more vehicles. Definitely increased hazard to the residents and to the students of the school. You can imagine by looking at the diagram here, the increased confluence of traffic with not only just the morning commute to Fort Bragg or to Jobs in Fayetteville or to the nearby tire plant, but also getting students to the elementary school and to the high school and during special events such as the football games across the street at Pine Forest High School. So obviously, I'm concerned about the safety of the increased vehicle flow that would come as a direct result of this proposed development. I feel a real duty in front of you right now, obviously, to promote my safety concerns, but that, God forbid, if there's a child or an adult that is hurt or killed by this increased traffic, I would feel terrible, as would anyone else in this room. I'm concerned about the safety, I feel it my duty to highlight my safety concerns about this development, as just mentioned. Are there any questions of me? Again, my name is Rob Gates and I live nearby in Woodbridge and I live at six-five-six-two Countryside Drive. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our last speaker is Ms. Michelle Ornialis.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, council members. I know quite a few of you pretty well. The reason I'm here tonight, I am the crime watch prevention headperson for Inverness, which is the neighborhood that literally, we butt right next to Woodbridge and we've been great neighbors. My biggest concern here, number one, I don't think that the client's council or the client themselves, either one, have ever had to live downstream of a dam, an eroding dam. I can tell you, when we moved back here in two thousand thirteen, the Army brought us here, we lived in Spring Lake. Unfortunately, we lived on Vass Road. Some of you will remember what happened to Vass Road during Matthew. We lost everything. We lost our homes. That was due to an erosion of a dam. You already have a dam sitting on your property that you know is eroding. What's that going to do to any of the residents in our nearby neighborhoods? Secondly, you have the traffic issue. I'm a mom, I'm also a daycare mom. I have three kids, two of which have graduated from Pine Forest and one of which is an amazing sophomore at Pine Forest currently. To any of you that didn't know, as he proceeded to tell you earlier, the school issue is a county issue. It's county commissioners, county school board, right? The property outlining this property is a county issue, is county commissioners. There is no one voting for District One in these neighborhoods that surround this little parcel of property. We all vote county council members, not city council members. That is a big issue because you are not getting any input or any retraction from any of the actual voters in this area. Andrews Road is a county road. When there's an accident, we have to wait twenty to thirty minutes for a county sheriff to show up to help us out with an accident. We have to wait approximately thirty to thirty-five minutes for a county sheriff to arrive to our home if there is a break-in or an invasion or someone is injured. I don't know if any of the city council is aware of that, but the residents on that road are very aware of it. Talk about the dangers for the students. All the children that live at Patriot's Ultras, which is the apartment condo complex at the end, from them to Patriot Park to Inverness to Woodbridge to Stonegate, the high school does not provide a bus. It is too close to the school district, they make those kids walk. There is only a sidewalk from Patriot Ultras to the baseball park of Pine Forest High School. There is not one on our side of the road. For three years, I've watched both of my older boys walk together with their friends. I've now for two years watched my daughter walk to the point where traffic's gotten so bad that my husband gets up every morning and takes her to school while I'm with the littles. Because it's too dangerous for her to make a four-minute walk from her home to her high school because there is no sidewalk. When I've called the county, they pass the buck. When I've called county school board, they pass the buck. I've been told to contact the safe way to schools, that apparently they have grants. Do you think we've heard anything back? No. I'm the mom that stops on that road every morning to let those kids cross in front of my vehicle so that no other kids get hit by another car. I'm the mom that pulls out of that parking lot at Pine Forest afternoons and watches the kids that walk down to the beginning of Woodbridge and cross the road without the crossing guard. I stop my vehicle and wave for those kids to go because I don't want to see those kids get hit. Do you know what it's like to get hit on that road? I can tell you. January fourth of last year, I was riding out of Inverness and coming just past the soccer field. Right there were the second development because this isn't the only one up for special use. You realize that this is only one of the two because the other one is going to be directly on the other side of Stonegate that's right here. They want to put another one right there. It does affect this. You've got two special use property, two special use permits going up in an area that is already congested, already full of traffic. Like I said, January first, or January fourth of last year, my car was totaled by a county sheriff's SUV that was going sixty-five miles an hour plus on Andrews Road, which mind you, is a forty-five mile an hour zone. No lights, no flashers. She didn't see me coming from the hill when she went into turn into Farmer's Road, which is right there next to the soccer field for the high school. She totaled my car with my fourteen-year-old child inside. Six inches back is what the state trooper said, six inches back, I wouldn't have gotten out of that car alive. Do you know what it's like as a parent to have to see your car on fire and look at your child and say, can you get your door open because I can't open mine because I knew that my car was on fire and I wanted my child out of my car? Because I was stuck. I was stuck. I don't blame the sheriff's officer that hit me, she couldn't see me. You can't see anything on that road. Anybody that knows anything that goes up and down Andrews Road all the time, there are two really big blind spots on that road. There's one by Farmers, which is where the one special use permit's going, and there's another one by the church, the Catholic church. You cannot see coming out of Woodbridge, Inverness or Patriot Park what's on the other side of that hill, am I correct? You can't see the traffic coming. It's almost impossible to get out. Three days ago, my husband, and a lot of people know about this, who's been training for a four-hundred-and-forty-mile cycle across North Carolina for veteran suicide awareness, got hit. He got hit on his bike, someone veered him off the road. Thank God there wasn't another car behind him because his bike went in the grass but my husband went in the middle of the road. The traffic over there is dangerous.
Okay. So I was going to tell you, I'm certainly not downplaying the tragedy, but we need to, this is a testimony reference to this case, so try to narrow it into that.
You had thirty-eight more buildings. It would be one thing if you were putting single-family homes in. You had thirty-eight, thirty-eight. Now imagine the impact that's going to have in the classrooms. Because with thirty-eight more homes comes how many children? How many high schoolers? How many elementary schoolers? Our classes are already exceeding limits. How many more middle schoolers? Are you going to have to rezone to throw some of the kids that have a great opportunity at Pine Forest out of the Pine Forest District to make room for these? No one's talking about that. You know, at the end of the day, it's, there was no traffic control that was done, I didn't see a study on that. I saw the red-cockated, you know, woodpeckers, which we have those in our backyard and we don't even live against where this actual development is going, but we have those in our yard. Guess what else we have? We have the North Carolina Brown Bat, which is protected- We have the North Carolina brown bat, which is protected by federal law. You can't even remove them if they nest in your home. To which tearing down some of the trees on Andrews Road this year caused a nice infestation into my neighbor's home. Do you know what it's like to get the phone call at 1:00 AM and say, I have a bat in my house, to find out she had a hundred and fifty baby bats in her attic? Yeah. You ask any of the people that are living there, they've already started cutting down trees on the back end of Stonegate. But they're not doing it against the roadway because they didn't want us to see it. But the bat population, they're flying, they're looking for new places, and they're gonna move into our homes, just like the termites that infest some of the trees back there. When you start tearing those down, they look for other places to live. They move into our homes. These are things that have never been thought about, but what I want you to think about is that everyone sitting on the city council, to all the people that live in the homes surrounding this property, we don't get a say in whether you stay or you go. But trust and believe, you have to look at all of our faces because we go to the same shops that you do. We live in the same city you do. And many of us help out the same citizens in the city. It's not about low-income housing. Clearly, he stated, these are gonna be for sale, not for rent. Can you guarantee that the sellers of these are not gonna rent? I didn't hear that part in your testimony. And with that, have a great evening.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
All right, council. Mr. Mayor, you had some rebuttal or speak to?
I have some rebuttal. I don't know that I necessarily have any cross-examination, Mr. Mayor, but I do have some rebuttal testimony I'd like to present, if I could, please. I've lived in this town my whole life. I grew up with woods in my backyard and they're not there anymore. I understand how these folks feel. That's part of the issue, living in a growing community that is, despite every obstacle that's been thrown at us, continues to thrive and grow and expand. And that's what we have here. I simply wish to remind the council that in the evidence that was presented here today by my client, your decision on the special use permit actually will promote fewer housing units being put on this land than more. And there are economic reasons to do that, and there are reasons having to do with topography, and there are reasons having to do with site planning economics. Because obviously, you'd think to yourself, well, you know, why, why is it that they're just not going ahead and building the forty-five units there right now? Is that not going to maximize the, the return on the, on the property investment? The answer, quite honestly and counterintuitively, is no. It won't. What makes more sense for the development of this land is what is before you tonight on a special use permit. It is the development of these thirty-four duplex townhome units and not up to forty-five single-family residential units, which will be of higher price points, considerably higher price points, but which can be built without application to this body for a special use And with respect to whether or not my client means what they say when they say that they're going to build accord, or have this property developed in accordance with the UDO, we have only the UDO guidelines to guide us with respect to stormwater runoff standards, with respect to traffic, with respect to the other matters that have been brought before you today. So all I can say is that CRA asks, given the evidence presented in the findings, for which no contrary expert rebuttal has been presented, that the special use permit be granted, as there is not competent evidence before you today to deny the same. And again, I apologize for the objections. If this were not a quasi-judicial proceeding, I would not have made them. I appreciate and respect the right of the citizens to speak. However, I have to preserve our appellate position. I hope that the council understands that. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, any, any other opponents rebuttal to any of that? All right, if not, closed evidentiary hearing. Councilman Dawkins?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I, I did have a couple of questions I wanted to ask the, the council to CRA. Did I understand you correctly that if this special use permit does not get approved, that you can actually build more houses and generate more traffic, which would create more problems?
That's correct. That is, that's not the intention, but that is correct.
Well, I realize that, but if it was me, it, it's, it's finance, it's money. I mean, when you could, you're talking forty-one houses versus thirty-four, you make more because all of them are gonna get sold. If they look as good as those things, they're all gonna get sold. So somebody's gonna buy them.
What, what's the?
Yes, that's correct. In order to get to that forty-one number and maximize the density, per the gross residential density standards the UDO provides, we would have to do some additional site work to some of the lower areas to, to bring it up, to make it so that we could put those forty-one, the forty-five homes on. As it sits now, the townhome duplex product was the best fit, but if we can't do that, we can do additional site improvements, you know, retaining walls, bringing some dirt, and then make the site a little more even to add those additional homes on. So, you know, it's just a matter of us, you know, I guess, taking the, the route a little less arduous.
Right. Mr. Mayor, the point I'm trying to make is that if we pass this special use permit, it'll actually generate less homes, less people, and less traffic. That's the point I wanted to make to the council. Because others have told me, this is gonna generate way too much traffic. No. The special use permit will actually reduce the amount of traffic, reduce the amount of people, and reduce the impact that will have on Andrews Road. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion when it's in order.
Yeah, okay. I'll circle back to you. We have a few, few more questions. I did have a question to that point. If you could do more, why are you applying for a special permit to do less?
Because of the typographical features that Mr. Armstrong just described, it would take additional site work to add the additional units to the, additional single-family units to the development. Quite honestly, Mr. Mayor, if, if my client didn't do any additional site work, it could go ahead tomorrow and submit plans to city inspections for up to thirty single-family homes on this site without any additional site work.
Okay, so just to make sure I'm, I'm.
So it could be, it could be significantly more.
With, with engineering and, and site work, he could make, make, put more on the lot. It's not necessarily a legislative issue. It, it's a.
Correct. With engineering and site work, you could create more lots.
But without it, it'll actually be less than what you're applying for.
But it would still be a substantial number, Mr. Mayor. It would be thirty rather than, it would be thirty higher-value, single-family residential homes as opposed to thirty-four duplex townhome units. And I would remind the council that in the SF-ten zoning, you can have ancillary, you can have ancillary uses on each lot, which could, to the points that were made in rebuttal, create conditions whereby in the future, and this is not my client's intention and it's not the intention of builders who will build and initially sell, but you could add in future, each of those thirty houses could contain another dwelling. And that's without a special use permit.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, because I've traveled Andrews Road most of my life, and I remember it when it was completely a pine forest and, you know, all, lot of development is coming, and has already come. The fact of the matter is, that land is gonna be developed. I mean, that, that's the fact of the matter is that they own the land, they've told us, we're looking for a special use permit, or we can do this. I will say to you, what I have heard from the residents that are in the county next door to it, I really haven't heard anybody say, you know, we don't want anything. But I think when people, when things like this happen, and one of the reasons I'm sitting here is because this exact same thing happened to me, decisions got made real fast. It was like, okay, you can either do this or you can do that, you gotta figure it out, and you've got this time to, to do it. The reality of it is, something's coming. It is. The land is not, the land is valuable right now. We need homes in the city of Fayetteville. We are in a housing shortage. You own the land, you pay taxes on the land, you can't keep it vacant if you can develop it. What I am asking for, number one, the traffic is horrific. Anybody sitting here, if you are doubting me, I am telling you, I'm giving you my word, it is horrific. I myself have sat there and got out and did traffic. But I think if we can take it off, have the developers meet with the community and say, you know, some people have not even seen what these houses are gonna look like, or these townhomes are gonna look like. I think I'm seeing some pleasantly surprised people when they did see it. When I saw it, I was surprised. It's not what I had in my mind that was going up there, and it looks a lot better than the apartment across the street, you know, it's not stacked high. So what I am asking is if we can bring it back for a week, I mean, next month, that the developers meet with the residents and just talk it out, like you said, we might be able to put some more buffers or things like that. We have done this in the past and it's worked out very well. But Andrews Road, I can promise you, I will be working with the state and DOT to figure out something with Andrews Road because it is a hot mess.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Council, Councilmember Kinston?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Several of the speakers addressed a dam that concerned about the dam collapsing and the water running off downstream. Can you confirm if there is a dam on that property?
Who are you, are you addressing? You were addressing the applicant, correct?
Yes, sir.
Can any?
Yeah, it is.
There's pictures of your package now.
Walter, please.
Yeah. There is a dam, an old, old pond that's not a full standing pond, it's just an old, old pond that does hold a little water, had been used or is just growing up.
In, in the pictures, in the green folder that you have in front of you, there's pictures of where it's flooded several times in the past year, so small stream aside, it floods a lot. So I, I disagree with the small stream, it used to be a pond issue. There's pictures of the flooding. That was about six feet of water that you see in that picture.
Councilmember Kinston, please understand as well that, you know, we don't have the advantage of the materials you've been given tonight. We've never seen them and none were handed to us, so it's hard for us to address issues, A, on the fly, and B, when you're looking at materials that we've not been given.
Okay, and thank you for acknowledging that. Mayor Protem, I would support sending it back for thirty days.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some mathematical questions. I keep hearing the distinction being used about single-family homes versus duplex units. I keep hearing lot size versus number of home, or lots versus number of homes. So I want to make sure numerically I understand. There can be thirty-four, thirty-four duplex units, each of which would represent one lot. Is that correct?
We are proposing thirty-four duplex townhome units, yes, each on its own lot.
Okay. If it were forty-five single-family homes, each would be on its own lot, correct?
That is correct.
If we look at these duplexes and we look at homes versus single-family homes, if we are doing thirty-four duplex units, if we approve that, we are approving sixty-eight homes, correct?
No, ma'am, you are approving thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
If you can see.
Thirty-four. So each duplex unit on each lot is only one unit?
Yes.
They share, they share a property line through the middle of the, of the duplex.
Right, so each lot has one duplex, correct?
Each lot has one unit of a duplex.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
So each lot has its own unit, the units share a property line, so each lot still only contains one unit?
Correct.
Okay, it's very, I'm, I'm glad that you clarified that because the way that I was understanding, as, as I was looking at this and even as I was doing the math, I was understanding sixty-eight total units, so I'm glad for the clarification.
And it's very.
Last question that I have. Go ahead.
If you can see this, Councilmember Waddell.
Mm-hmm. I have that also pulled up on my end.
All right, wonderful. So you can see how the, you can see how the, the master plan addresses your question. You can see that it is thirty-four units total with the property line moving down the middle of each unit such that each unit is on its own lot. So it is not sixty-eight, in fact, thirty-four.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. How many bedrooms do these proposed units have?
Again, we're developing the land and the lots to sell these lots to a, a home builder. You know, we're, we're talking with a few top-tier builders in the area. You know, all indications we're getting is they'll be between eighteen-hundred and two thousand square feet. I mean, that's typically a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath with a bonus room over the garage. But again, the builders that we sell these lots to will ultimately, you know, build a plan that they feel will do the best on these lots.
If there were a builder under contract and we had an elevator, we had a specific plan for a home, we would show it to you tonight.
And the last question, thank you for that. The reason I ask that question is because typically, when you're looking at a duplex, some of them can be one bedroom, one bathroom, some of them can be three or four bedrooms, two bathrooms, and that will determine your volume of people also. So the last question that I have that's numerically based, when we talk about the difference in why the, the developer is choosing one plan over another, to be very clear, just to state it emphatically, the issue between the single-family homes is it would cost the developer more to prep the land and to, to prepare to develop than it would to go the route. There would be more required in terms of cost investment as opposed to duplex units. Is that accurate?
It is, but again, we could sell those lots at a higher price. You know, all the calculations we've done, these, they're running neck and neck, the cost to the, to up, to improve the site, to do the additional lots, and what we could sell those for is essentially neck and neck to what we have here, so, you know, it's just the thirty-four lots on this as it is, is, was, you know, just the, I guess, simpler route to go, if you will.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Mayor Protem, I too would support this coming back to us at a later date, given, given there time to be some discussion between both parties to see if they may come to an amenable compromise.
All right. Councilman Dawkins, did you have anything?
I'm ready to make a vote.
Oh, I think, Mayor Protem was, uh.
Well, I, I'd, I'd said that, well.
I'll, I'll be able to, Mayor Protem, we can, we can delay this thirty days if you want. I think you're wasting your time, but sure we do it.
No.
I have a question too.
All right, question for, take action.
Thanks, Mayor. Just listened to my colleague there, but as far as a meeting, which I, was the only question that I had, was there ever a proposed meeting with the community and the builder?
There can't have been.
Well, was there still?
No.
No, sir. It's never been, it was just addressed in a letter. There's a sign outside, it's in one of the pictures, and there was a letter that was given off of the home, only within the first five hundred pages of the property. Five hundred pages, sir.
Okay, well, I think this is very good, so I will submit to a meeting and see if we can run out, sweep out some of the work pages. Keep an eye on this.
All right, Councilman, Councilman Davis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to ask, is there an appetite for them to, to have discos? Because we often do this and then we file out thirty days later. Because we often do this, and then we find out thirty days later, and neither party can talk to each other. Have you, have there been discussions about, have they decided they won't talk, offer them a chance to talk?
Oh, she said no.
It was never presented to us. We received a letter in the mail, and that was the first I've heard of it. Some of us saw the sign outside our development, and we saw the sign, and it said, you know, the typical city piece, and then we got a letter in the mail the next day. And that was the only thing that we've heard until we've been here tonight, I couldn't even point these guys out of that crowd, I really couldn't. So that was the only time, this is the first of us, we were told to come here tonight to speak on, on the behalf of the community.
So, in defense, I don't know if everybody realizes that this neighborhood is in the cap, and is not in our neighborhood watch and everything that we have, so, you know, that was.
All right, Councilman Wright, and then, uh-
Councilman Wright? As well, neighboring neighborhoods were not getting any type of letter, statement. It was only mailed out to the homes that were in five hundred foot of that property line, that was it.
That's the policy.
All right, so, so, Councilman Wright, and then we'll need to take action.
So tonight, we've discussed in the judicial manner, and I guess, however long-
You say you pull it?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, I don't need to make comment.
All right. All right.
Me too.
Thank you all, good luck to you working it out. All right, let's take a, take about a five-minute break, Council, we'll move to the next item. I got a text, too. Is our internet not working? Good evening, we'll call a meeting back to order, moving to item eight point zero two, special use permit to allow self-storage mini warehouse. Doc Newton?
The whole thing, providing your testimony is sworn in, the attorneys don't have to do that, as a, as full requirement, because of practicing law, however, we do it as a practice here in the city, and I believe we have one-
Yes, sir.
-person who is presently in another conversation. Anyone speaking at the hearing and must provide competent material, substantial evidence to the city council under oath, anyone planning on speaking during this evidentiary hearing, please stand and be sworn by the city clerk to swear affirm that testimony you plan to give is true.
So you swear affirm that testimony you're at Fayetteville?
You'll be hearing the, as you're also familiar, this is an SUP. It's worth noting that the next item that you have that's legislative would have eliminated this as an SUP, but still, by order of items that you have on your agenda, this is coming to you as an SUP.
So, so Doc Newton, just to rephrase that, I thought that was the case, the next item coming up, if it passes, would make this a non-factor, so was it necessary for us to go through the process?
That's not mine to answer, I know it was one that was raised earlier today.
So Council, we are tracking that, right, that next, one of the text amendment changes is to not require a special use permit for this very item, so does it make sense to hear this as the item before that action is taken, is the question?
It doesn't.
As much as we like Mr. Player's company-
I would submit that the mayor is making perfect sense, as usual, and that, yes, if you pass the text amendments that are upcoming, this is my opinion.
So, Mr. Mayor, so, Mr. Mayor, your proposal would be to hear the text amendments, the, and then, if necessary, hear his case?
Well, if we table the item, we move on to item eight point oh three, if it passes, then item eight point oh two is irrelevant.
Yes, sir, that was what I said, we just said it a little bit different.
Okay, yes, ma'am. All right, so Council, can we have a motion to table our eight point oh two?
So be it, sir.
All right, motion by Councilmember Dawkins, seconded by Councilmember Wright, any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you, those in favor. All right, Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
Councilmember Ingram? Okay, so her vote's in affirmative, I guess. All right, motion carries, item eight point zero three, text amendments.
This is a public hearing, it will require you to open your testimony, and we don't believe we have anybody signed up, but it is, as been indicated already by the city manager, was properly advertised in the newspaper as a public hearing, and Alicia Moore, senior planner, is gonna be presenting these items. Mayor Colvin, I believe you indicated that we hold a public hearing as one, but you wanted separate votes on each of the seven?
Uh, yes, sir, so, individuals desiring to speak at the public hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before 7:00 PM, fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing, individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each, unless by previous arrangement, single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire fifteen minutes. When the clerk calls your name, please state your name and address, for the record, you may then address the council, be notified at thirty seconds that you have thirty seconds remaining, at the end of your allotted time, the timer will ring. This time, I'll turn it back over to you, Doc Newton, and staff.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. Alicia Moore, senior planner with Development Services. We have these seven proposed seasonal text amendments. They are, sorry, they're not the first time you've been seeing them. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval on October seventeenth, and they have been to a work session twice, once on August second, and again on October fourth. At the, sorry, typo, should've been corrected, not November fourth, October fourth. Council requested some changes at that latter work session, which have been integrated into the proposals. These are the seven proposed text amendments, they cover self-storage, mini warehouses, open space dedication, and where trees can be planted, allowing larger accessory uses on large residential lots, increasing consistency for residential density allowances in MR5 and CC zones, reducing the number of special use permits for certain uses in zones, nonconformities in landscaping requirements, and the regulation of political signs in the right-of-way. All right, so this is the one on mini warehouses, and there are two main reasons behind the changes. First is to remove the number of times when an applicant is required to apply for a special use permit, and second, to encourage more efficient vertical development. Facilities would be split into two types, one where units must be accessible either, or may be accessible, either from interior corridors or from the exterior, where you can drive up to the storage bays, and the other, which is interior access only, where the units may only be accessed via internal corridors. And by splitting them into these two types, we can create specific standards for either type. The exterior, interior access type is essentially the same as the existing use, with the as-of-right development expanded into the industrial, the more intense commercial zones, which reduces the occasion for SUPs. The internal access-only type is the newly created use, and since these units can only be accessed from interior corridors, and you don't have those garage-like storage bays, we can reduce the lot size and the number of required parking spaces, and just add loading and unloading zones. The height restriction is removed, subject only to the general height restrictions of the applicable zoning district, with the point being to allow for taller, less sprawling facilities, which would more closely resemble office buildings. Number two, this text amendment is a technical change. Current regulations allow for a development bonus when trees are planted in the shelf of the pond, but planting trees in the shelf is not consistent with the stormwater regulations or the enforcement policy. And the shelf is that area where the red area, arrow is pointing. So that provision is being changed to allow trees to be planted around the pond instead of the shelf. Accessory uses, one of the standard reasons to adjust the zoning code is in response to a consistently high number of variance applications. In this case, the city receives a lot of variance requests to allow larger accessory structures on large residential lots that are greater than an acre in size. This may come up when somebody wants to build a barn or a large garage. Currently, accessory structures are limited to the lesser of twelve hundred square feet or twenty-five percent lot coverage, regardless of how big the actual lot size is. So the amendment would create an alternative option for lots that are at least one acre, which would allow accessory structures to be two thousand square feet with an additional two hundred and fifty square feet for each additional half acre in lot size. The chart here shows examples of how that figure would be calculated, and it could go up at infinitum. The last change is to the definition of accessory structure, which currently requires that it is subordinate both in size and use relative to the principal. We found that distinction to be arbitrary, so now the only requirement is that it is subordinate in use, not irrespective of the size. Residential density, the proposed changes will resolve inconsistencies under current regulations by increasing the allowable residential density in the higher intensity zoning districts, which currently are more restrictive than in the lesser intensity districts. In the LC, the limited commercial zones, the allowable density is twenty-four units per acre, LC is designated as medium intensity. But in the CC, community commercial and MR5 zones, which are designated as medium-high intensity, they actually have more restrictions on the density. So the changes will resolve this inconsistency by increasing the density allowances in the MR5 and CC zones to match that of the LC zones, so that they are all at twenty-four units per acre. The maximum height would also be increased in MR5 zones, which is a medium-high intensity zone, it would be increased to match the community commercial, the CC zones, which is also medium-high intensity, so that they would both be at six stories or seventy-five Number five, the goal here was just to reduce the number of special use permits that are required. So we went through the use table to see where we could change it, either by going up to allowed as-of-right or down to prohibited, and we selected these ones that seem to be least likely to cause controversy. And with the exception of dormitories, all these uses would become permitted as-of-right in the shown zoning districts. In MR5 districts, which is the only residential district that allows for small-scale commercial use, any business would be required to locate on an arterial collector or major street. And this would be to ensure harmonious development, so we don't have commercial uses in the middle of residential subdivision. All right, non-conforming landscaping requirements. This applies to sites of two acres or less, the purpose of these changes is to adjust and reduce the landscaping requirements for non-conforming properties when a developer seeks to make alterations or renovate that property. The requirements are triggered by the need for a building permit, and not by a threshold percentage of remodeling cost to building value as they were prior to the June 2020 amendment, and as required for sites over two acres. In turn, many businesses have been required to install landscaping that costs a lot more than the building remodeling costs. So staff has prepared three alternative options for this amendment, which I will cover in detail on the next slide. But the main changes that are in common to all three alternative options are the compliance trigger, which would be changed from the need for a building permit to a threshold percentage of remodeling cost. Next is adding a provision specifically for physically constrained lands, requiring compliance to the maximum extent practicable, with the first objective being public safety and buffering issues, and third, the landscape island is currently required to be a minimum of nine by eighteen feet. Under the proposed changes, it would be changed to one hundred and sixty-two square feet without regard to specific dimensions. This is a comparison between the current requirements and the three proposed alternatives. And before we get into the details here, I want to explain that in the attached proposed legal ordinances, there are three included for this one amendment, so necessarily, two of those won't be used. So the first factor, compliance trigger exterior, is the same for all three alternatives, which is twenty-five percent of the total value of the structure. The bottom two factors, physically constrained lands and landscape islands, are also the same in that they all allow leeway to comply to the maximum extent practicable, and that they all change the size requirement for landscape islands to one hundred and sixty-two square feet. The main difference among these three alternatives is the compliance trigger for interior renovations. Initially, staff proposed a threshold of twenty-five percent, the same as for exterior, so that's alternative one, parentheses, original. Alternative two is the revised version, which exempts interior renovations completely, so that regardless of the amount of the expenditure, interior renovations would not require any landscaping to bring the property closer to conformance. Alternative three, the in-between, is where the trigger for interior renovations is moved to fifty percent of the value of the tenant unit space, or one hundred thousand dollars, whichever is greater. Based on the figures from the past year, staff was able to estimate the number of commercial renovations that would be required to implement landscaping under the three proposed alternatives. Under alternative one, the interior threshold, if the interior threshold were set to a remodeling cost of twenty-five percent of the value of the structure, then approximately twenty percent of commercial renovations would be subject to upgrading the landscaping requirements to bring them closer to the code. That figure falls to only six percent if interior renovations are exempted altogether. And if we use alternative three at fifty percent of the tenant's base, then approximately ten percent of renovations would need to implement landscaping upgrades. These sections tie in directly to one of the land use strategies stated in the future land use plan, which aims to improve the city's gateways by continuing to require perimeter landscaping and planting islands in significant renovations along commercial corridors. Finally, number seven, regulation of political signs. This amendment would have the city adopt the state standards for regulation of political signs. They would allow signs to be in the right-of-way within thirty days of either side of the election, and there's certain size and location standards that are in the state statute that the city would be subject to. And other sign categories that were in the right-of-way would continue to be removed under the signs ordinance. Options are to approve the adoption of the text amendments, and I understand that council wants to look at those individually, and we have, we have here the, there's six of them with only one single option, and then TA 21 014, nonconformities, has those three alternatives. Number two is denial of the proposed text amendments, three is revision and adoption of the proposed text amendments, or remanding of the proposed text amendments back to staff for further consideration. Thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll, Councilman Herring and Wright?
Mayor, before I, no, could you leave that up there, please? Okay, before I move on the motion, when I saw this last week, or the last time it came before us, and I'm for-
Yes, sir.
All right, so, you know, this has been something we've talked about repeatedly. So, alternative two is the revised. You had an original, you have kind of an in-between with alternate three, but alternate two is the revised one that we worked through at the work session.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Hare and then Wright.
Mayor, before I, no, could you leave that up there, please? Okay, before I move on the motion, when I saw this last week, well, the last time it came before us, and I'm for option two, but what if there are no, is no landscaping at all? When they're doing the small, some kind of small repairs with inside of an interior structure, what about the, what it looks like in the original state in choosing option two?
If I can, I think I hear you correctly. If not, please.
Yeah.
Judge. The, if they're, if they are missing landscaping and they're working interior and you pick alternative two, they don't have to make any improvements. They don't have to do any extra landscaping if you use alternative two. That's the idea of the compliance trigger, is they're exempt on anything on the interior.
Okay, I'm good.
Is that?
Something popping, right. If there aren't any other questions?
I do have Councilmember Wright, and then I'll come back.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to make an motion as well, so.
Maybe y'all can support.
If you're gonna.
Yes, sir. Leave that up there, please.
All right, Councilmember.
Yes, Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept alternative two as the revised motion.
All right, second.
The text amendments.
All right, it's motion by Councilmember Hare to accept alternative two, seconded by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Who's voting to accept? All right, Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
Is Councilmember Ingram back on? All right, Madam Clerk.
She just came back on.
All right, Councilmember Ingram. All right, motion carries. All right, thanks, thank you guys. Counsel.
Six.
Oh, you're doing.
Green.
It's about like that T-Mobile commercial, lady. Made the face.
Item six of.
All right.
So, that was one.
Right.
One of the items.
All right, so, what you're saying is even though he proposed to accept all seven proposals, you need to do something different?
It is entirely up to you how you want to handle these, if you want to take the bundle that remains of six.
I think you showed it during the public hearing.
Pardon?
I said, I think, she went over each individual one during the public hearing. He made a motion that included all of them, the motion carried, so. Okay.
Just the 21, one he made was just the 21, so that's 014, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right, we'll keep moving then.
So.
So, Councilmember Hare, you want to handle the rest of these?
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so.
I'm sorry, we had a side huddle. I don't know what you were saying.
So, Councilmember Davis is going to complete the other individual one.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept item number, text amendment number TA 21-09, TA 21-010, ZA 21-011, TA 21-012, TA 21-013, and ZA 21-015, having already approved 14. I make a motion that we approve those changes to the UDO.
All right, it's a motion by Councilmember Davis to make the, to support following changes of the Unified Development Order, seconded by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? Council, I'll look to you for your votes on that. All right, Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
Councilmember Ingram?
Green.
All right, motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Do have a question for you.
Thank you.
The stormwater ordinance that we had been talking about, that made it consistent for if you deserve, disturb 5,000 feet for renovation, you allowed up to 20,000 feet of disturbance for new construction. Do you remember, I remember the council had a consensus to make that consistent, 20,000, 20,000. Do you know if that is something that you all are tracking, or we got to go back and dig it up?
I can ask, I can ask that department where they are on it. I don't, I haven't personally tracked that one to know, but.
Mr. Manager, you remember the conversation, I'm sure.
I don't, actually.
Oh, really?
I don't, but we'll track it tomorrow.
Okay.
But I think it may have actually passed already, but I.
I thought so. Well, nobody seems to know.
I know you, I know you made two different adjustments, but that's.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Dr. Newt.
You're welcome, thank you.
I vote that pass.
All right, so I think that took care of Mr. Playa's issue, the new law. So, now we have our 9.01, is he back?
Blake?
Yes.
Let's see if he's outside.
He's there.
Here they come. Do we need to reel the table back real quick? Oh, she's got it.
Yeah, I think they're expecting us to use the podium.
Yeah, we can, we can.
Oh, good stuff. Thank you.
Here's power.
Great. Thank you, Jay.
All right, you too. It's all on you all, so.
Hopefully.
So, that's the ethernet.
Yes, sir. And then we have HDMI port here.
Okay.
Ethernet goes right there.
Thank you.
I don't know if that's a good, I don't think that provides power.
Okay, I will need, and this has a longer cable, but I do need power. That'll work. I can maybe. Got another chair or something?
Yep, thank you.
I have the. Scissor. Okay, so I am, just want to make sure I can, is there anything I need to do to?
Should be. Duplicate in your screen there. Check when I.
And you, shall I go ahead and explain? Okay. I have a number of visuals to share, and we hopefully.
We can hop into the same Zoom meeting as you're in earlier, and then we could share it.
Okay.
That'll probably be the easiest way.
Okay.
I'll let you hop over there. Come around to the side. What's the? Yeah, I'll show you in a second. Click on your down link here, you should see it, right there.
Okay.
Yeah, because you were just in it, right there in that regular meeting.
All right, there it is then.
And then. And then your passcode, give me one second here. Yeah, don't say that in loud. And join without. Now, you just hit join with, yeah, there we go. Then I'll let you share.
I don't understand what Mr. Kessel, what was the purpose of doing this? Is this to show the update between Councilwoman Hare?
Yes, he was going to propose a couple of alternatives since he had a chance to go and work on them.
tweak the numbers and just kind of see, and then based on census block, neighborhoods, same roads.
Right.
I didn't do good in capital.
Yeah, there's a lot of my.
I'm sorry, that's, you got any problems here?
How fast, or perhaps through a frame.
Okay, so we've, it's visible on that screen up there and maybe on the front of the podium as well. So, essentially, all of these different alternatives are, and if it would be possible to have the screen on the big screens, that would be helpful, too. Essentially, all the ways that these options we're about to present differ are all in that same general part of town that we've been talking about, in the area south of LaGrange, that we've spent a fair amount of time looking at. And I just want to make sure here, I've got, still got the ability to do the interactive map, although I don't have the, I don't have all the layers in the interactive map. That's cool. So, this is zooming in on the area that we were looking at, and this is the particular area in question that Councilmember Hare has had some questions about. This is Morganton Road. This down here is Clifdale. And you'll see over here, the reason that this is centered the way it is, is that this is that Hope Loop area right here, which you can see is currently shown as being in District Seven. But as we move to the next option, which is option A, we're calling option A3, the only change this makes is that Hope Loop change. So, I can sort of toggle back and forth, but if you look at this area here, this is the change that was discussed. It seemed like everybody was okay with it. The 2020 census block count for that area has zero population, so it doesn't change the population of either district. So, the only thing that's different between A2 and A3 is that Hope Loop apartments area. Option A4 adds part of this neighborhood here. And again, the reason that it can't take in sort of the more full areas because of this huge census block that has more than 800 people, but option A4 would bring in this part of this neighborhood. Option A5 would bring in part of this neighborhood, as well as there's a condo development here. And then option A6 would just bring in the condo development. And I have in my notes, which I did not put on the podium, the names of those neighborhoods, and we should be able to see them on the interactive map, too. But the area that would go into District Nine in option A6 is the Landfall condos are in this area here. And in option A5, the area that's mostly in here is the Glen Riley neighborhood. So, essentially, in addition to A2, now we have A3, A4, A5, and A6. A3, again, doesn't change anything in this area, but A4, A5, and A6 do. And we also have the statistics. This is the familiar, the same table we've looked at for the other plans, but here for the other options, I didn't reproduce all the districts, because the only districts whose statistics change in options A3 through A6, technically, they only change in options A4 through A6, are Districts Four and District Nine. So, you'll see, actually, if you look, that in option A3, the rows for District Four and District Nine are actually identical to the ones I've highlighted here. But you can look and see how these do vary somewhat, and the, all of the deviation percentages in this column I'm highlighting now are within the plus or minus 5%.
All right, so you've certainly provided six options. So, not sure that, you know, the two councilmembers who would be most impacted by that change have had a chance to look at all of that. I'll kind of defer to you guys, if you want to receive that information and take it and process it. I think, I think basically a consensus comes down to six or seven options, unless you all are able to look at it on the screen and make a decision.
It's really up to my colleagues that has been shown to me already, so.
I think this is entirely House, so we need to have options for the changes.
I like A5.
Absolutely. Please be recognized, Madam, Councilmember. What'd you say, Councilmember Hare?
I mean, I like A5, but it really is up to my colleagues.
All right, so, Councilmember, Councilmember Kinsley, any thoughts?
I'd like to look at some more.
Well, I thought the original conversation was that Councilmember Hare actually wanted to get rid of that whole bottom end. In looking at A5, I can't make a decision, I mean, looking at it.
That's fair. I mean, that was a lot of information. So, council, if there's a consensus that Mr. Blake would send, give these maps to us, allow us to process that, see if we can work toward a unified agreement?
I have a question.
Mayor Proti.
In A5 and A6, how many residents are we looking at?
So, if we take, just, it's easiest maybe to see here, this is, if we take this as sort of the baseline, option A3, and then compare that in A5 and A6, you can see that it's maybe easiest to do the math here, that District Nine would get about 810 people, 809 people in addition in option A5. So, that's the difference between this 141 here and this 950 here is 809 people. With A6, it's a much smaller number. What is that, about 171?
Yeah.
An addition of 171 people to District Nine, which would obviously be that many fewer people in District Four.
What does six look like on the map?
A6 is. Let's see if I can, I just inadvertently closed that tab, just one moment. So, that, yeah, A6 is just that, the bottommost piece there, between the railroad tracks and Clifdale Drive. All right, so, council, there's a census, pull these six, seven options out, take a look at it, and we'll get with manager, or get with council at a reconvening. What's the next scheduled meeting we have?
Monday, Thursday.
Okay, so Monday, let's look toward having a resolution on Monday if we can.
Would you like it, if you only have Monday?
I know we have a lot of.
Well, we have two meetings, especially meeting. Right after, yeah.
Yeah.
And then you have.
Yeah, this needs to be dealt with. Yeah, this needs to be dealt with, I think.
And then we'll need eight votes to make it official.
No, it's a special meeting, so it'll all be live, and it's official.
Six of them. So then just six, two.
It'll be a regular meeting, just like this, right, Madam Attorney?
Because that's work session, Mike.
But he said it's a special meeting, right?
Special meeting for a public hearing on economic development.
On what?
On economic development.
Yeah, so we can get it in then, and it'll be.
We'll add it to that.
All right. So motion adjourned?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you.